Good morning. It is nine o'clock. We're going to call today's Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Let me know for the record that there's a copy of the Open Meetings Act on the wall. There is an automatic defibrillator in the back of the room. And if you will, please silence or turn off your phones. With that, let's stand for the pleasure of allegiance.
Pleasure of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that, we will call to order the Douglas County Board of Equalization meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Here.
Commissioner Duda?
Present.
Commissioner Kraft?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Mr. Chair.
Here. Item A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, December 4th, 2018. Item B, call for a meeting and set Tuesday, December 18th, 2018, as the date for hearing on certified assessments and corrections. What's the will of the Board?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Kraft, second by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Once again, Commissioner Boyle's vote will not be indicated on the screen, but he does vote yes, as do the rest of the commissioners. Motion passes.
Item C is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on Board of Equalization-related items not listed on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments at this time?
I am here. Paul Bellinger, 10215 West Center Road. I would just like to have the asking the Board of Equalization to receive the document into the record of today's meetings for my appeal for the suspension of disbelief of the others that caused my appeal. And that would be it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none. We have four resolutions, item D, E, F, and G. What's the will of the Board? There's a motion by Commissioner Duda to approve D, E, F, G, and adjourn, second by Commissioner Boyle. Please vote.
Motion passes. All commissioners voting yes.
We will now call to order the Douglas County Board of Corrections meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Commissioner Duda?
Yes.
Commissioner Kraft?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan? Mr. Chair.
Yes. Item one, approval of the minutes of the Board of Corrections meeting held Tuesday, November 20, 2018. What's the will of the Board? Motion by Commissioner Duda, is that second? Second by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes. All commissioners voting yes.
Item two is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on Board of Corrections-related items not listed on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments? Seeing none. Item three is the report of the Director of Corrections, Director Myers.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Myers, the Director of Corrections for Douglas County. I call your attention to my Board of Corrections report. Enclosure number one, we are over budget. That is mainly due to changes in the FOP contract, which was enacted after our budget was approved. We are getting close to coming up with the dollar amount to work with Mr. Lorenz on for crediting our budget for the impact of that, of those contractual changes. Hopefully, January or February's report will reflect an adjusted budget for here on out for the rest of the fiscal year. Enclosure number two, community corrections and in-house programs. Twenty individuals were housed at our sanction center, which is our utilization of the work release facility for individuals serving sanctions through probation and problem-solving courts for 128 bed days. We've only been doing this since mid-July. This was the highest number of people we've referred over to the sanction center during that short history we have with that program. A planning meeting was held for the Transitional Discharge Center with the county court judges in November. I actually just had the meeting with the district court judges for that program last Friday, and we actually did take our first placements into that program. That is another bed-saving strategy initiative to try and shift individuals to the community correction center from the jail. Individuals who we didn't take initially because of their overall history and risk, but we look at how they did during the course of their incarceration, and attempt to manage them in the work release center for the final week of their incarceration. In theory, we may be able to save, you know, well, we typically have about 30 individuals who have one week or less on a sentence left. Some of those people are not over there for a good reason, and they'll remain and serve their remaining days in the jail, but if we can get half of those people out to the work release center for their final week, that'll have a measurable impact on our population in the jail. Our new pre-trial release program continues to assess individuals who are incarcerated after their initial court appearance and refers them for bond reviews. We've had some success with that. I will be revisiting with the planning group of stakeholders on that to try and ramp that up a little bit more in the coming months. We also had Operation Toy Lift, which is a very, it's an annual tradition, the Department of Corrections, a long partnership with the Salvation Army, where they bring a group of people and we assist them with our staff, and they basically canvass the entire population of the jail to identify children of incarcerated parents, people who will be incarcerated on Christmas Day, and arrange for gifts to be delivered to those families on behalf of their parent. So, a very worthwhile effort for us each year, and thanks to the Salvation Army for their partnership. The 24/7 sobriety program had 34 admissions. There were 3,020 breath tests that were completed. Fourteen were positive for alcohol use. There were six no-shows. The overall compliance for breath testing was 99.4%. Forty-one individuals were monitored for a total of 780 days of SCRAM monitoring. There were zero no-shows. There's one tampering violation and zero alcohol violations. The SCRAM compliance rate was 99.9%. There were 374 saliva drug tests administered with 19 positive tests, and there were 15 no-shows. There were eight drug testing patches submitted for testing with zero violations. Work release admitted 44 individuals in November. Those individuals donated 198 hours of community service. House arrest admitted 60 individuals. RAP admitted 36 individuals. Programs in the jail admitted 50 individuals, and one individual there achieved GED. Twenty-seven individuals were referred for priority prosecution for pre-trial services. 448 bed days were saved as a result. 563 individuals were placed on pre-trial release during November, and in total, 1,181 individuals over the course of the month were monitored on pre-trial release with a 90% compliance rate. First-year data collection for the current audit cycle for community corrections is basically complete and just being organized at this point. We'll prepare for year two beginning in January. Enclosure number four, personnel. We had a new hire class begin training last week. They will be, their graduation will take place in early January, and they'll be on the floors in mid-January. The class currently has 11 candidates in it. We'll be hiring another one or two classes right behind that one, and then I hope to settle into more of a quarterly training cycle, a new hire cycle after that. We hopefully will be where we need to be after those next couple of classes. And Andrew Dunning was promoted from sergeant to lieutenant in November as well. So, congratulations to Lieutenant Dunning. Enclosure number five, our population. It has remained stubbornly high even as we got into the colder weather. We didn't really see any decline, actually. We had 600, what, excuse me, 1,650 admissions. We had 1,635 releases. Our high count was 1346. Our low count was 1,228. Our average daily population was 1,301. There were 367 custodial sanctioned bed days, so we got about a third of those bed days served over in the sanction center, so we didn't have the full impact of those 367 days in the jail. The U.S. Marshal population decreased. The ICE population decreased. The felony pre-trial population increased. The misdemeanor pre-trial population decreased, and the female population increased, and we had four housing units open for females during November. Enclosure number six, our medical. We had 1,356 intake screenings. There were 472 health and physical assessments. Turning to enclosure number seven, mental health. We had 156 initial psychiatric assessments, 172 initial mental health assessments. There were 45 infirmary placements. We had five referrals to the Board of Mental Health and one referral to a long-term psychiatric facility. Other noteworthy items, we continue to conduct an organizational chart review of the Department of Corrections. We are nearly complete. My final meeting for that process is a little over a week from now, on December 20th. I'll get together with my leadership team at that point, and we'll recommend any changes to how we want to organize and assign areas of responsibility based upon our current realities of the challenges that we face. And then we will immediately start filling our vacant leadership positions at that point based upon that new organizational chart. Construction for the public safety bond continues in the first two housing units. That's going fairly well. It is a little more complicated, I think, than the first phase of construction. There's a lot more digging in behind through concrete walls and into floors, and that has created some occasional challenges, but they seem to be overcome in pretty short order, and the project remains on schedule. I also wanted to point out the actions of Officer Alfredo Campos. He took very quick and decisive actions, and he saved the life of an inmate who was at risk of imminent serious harm. And an item that I neglected to include that I wanted to mention in my report is the, we did have some Veterans Day recognitions, both for our incarcerated veterans and our staff. In particular, I wanted to point out that we had the last surviving Tuskegee Airmen in Nebraska visit our veterans' unit in the jail. His name was Robert Holtz. It was very, it was a very inspiring ceremony, and it was really special to see what honor and esteem the inmates in the veterans' program held him in. You could see that they were very awestruck by his presence, and it was a very special thing for me to get to witness. With that, I will take any questions.
Commissioner Boyle, then Commissioner Morgan.
Mike, thank you very much. It was a good report, and there's some questions that came up to me, but I think what I'd like to do is ask that the Board members tell me when they might be available. We'll send out some dates, and I think several years ago, we had a meeting at your facility, and it was really interesting because we got into a lot of detail about what's taking place, and of course, the, those who suffer from mental illness over there are, it's a growing number, and something that, you know, we need to, we're doing a fine job at it, but I think we need to do even more. So, I'm going to propose a meeting over there when the commissioners can attend, and we'll do that and go through some things extensively. I wanted to ask you, when you talk about SCRAM and RAB and R O B and all that, RAB you defined, but SCRAM you didn't, and something, when you use, I'm surprised Commissioner Kraft didn't speak up. He's always the person on acronyms and jargon. So, I just mentioned that.
SCRAM is a, basically, it's the name of a product, and it is an alcohol-detecting bracelet that we fix to individuals' ankles who are on the 24/7 program.
Mark has one on his, but not for that. Anyway, I also just want to briefly mention, I'm very happy about the personnel numbers. Those seem to be coming up pretty well, and is that, you know, we had a terrible problem earlier, and the Board stepped in, and at the recommendation of Dr. Foxall, increased wages, and it worked pretty well. But that's important that you keep us on top of that, too. We appreciate it, and if you can let us know when these classes are graduating, and I think you did that in the past.
Will do.
We'll certainly try to attend.
Absolutely.
I want to thank you and congratulate you on taking over. Actually, you were up to total speed when you stepped into the office and took off, and so we'll plan a meeting where you can over and spend some time with you and listen to you even more carefully.
Look forward to it.
But I really appreciate the effort you and your great chief deputy are doing, and the staff has already seemed to be clicking real well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan.
Mike, thank you very much. You said it kind of quickly, the gentleman that saved a life there. Might be nice if we had him come before the Board and maybe even add a resolution.
Certainly.
And thank him for that very service that occurred. I mean, that's really appreciated, and...
I'd like to take this forum to talk, to mention those things when they happen, when they occur, because they happen far more often than the public is aware, that, and in a variety, some of them are, you know, immediate actions that people take to save a life. Some of them are just as important, but they're more preventative in nature. They catch something earlier on before it gets to the point of a crisis, but we have a great staff that are vigilant and take their duties very seriously.
And too often, what we do here are the opposite situations, where one of our officers is assaulted or something else happens, so we want to be appreciative of that. The other thing I heard mentioned, you're running over on your budget a little bit, which...
Correct.
I'm certain Joe Lorenz is listening carefully to that. Hopefully, we can get that and work with you to do whatever we can. The overtime, I know, has come down some, and I know you've got the class you just mentioned. How's that going?
We still have overtime. We still have ordered overtime. It has decreased. We still have a little ways to go. We did, we've had some attrition in staff since I've taken over. Well, that'll probably never go away completely. One of my highest priorities is working on the mentoring and ongoing support of younger officers so that we improve that staff retention over time. We've had a lot of discussions about that with the Training Department and with, throughout the ranks of the Fraternal Order of Police, to be able to set up some processes to better support our younger officers. There's, you know, there are, we've had to catch up on some training that we had delayed when staffing was really short, so that, you know, it's a necessity that we have to do to maintain compliance with certain standards. That, by conducting training, you are going to create some overtime because you're pulling people off of their posts and into a training room. And the construction does take, you know, a few extra slots of staff who are assigned to provide security around all the tools and the contractors that are being utilized. So, hopefully, like I said, I'm hoping by the end of the first quarter of 2019, we'll be very close to where we need to be on our staffing levels.
Okay, and make sure, you know, if you need to talk to us, and it's three of us at a time or whatever, we'll be glad to come to your office if you say, here's a challenge I have, and I'd like some input. Not that we have the expertise you have or your staff has, but we want to be supportive, and it's so important, the safety and doing the best that we can for those people that are held there in detention and so on, and certainly be supportive of your staff and what they do each and every moment down there. So, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Duda.
I had a, well, I brag a lot about our 24/7 program, and not that I should get any credit for it, but the county, it's a better way of handling these situations, just like drug court. I mean, we're getting smarter in a lot of ways. My question is, during a bad weather day here recently, they canceled, I think that was about two weeks ago, and I get that. You don't want people putting themselves at risk to come in for the tests, but I just wonder if somebody's on the 24/7 program, and suddenly you say, hey, take a day off, does that have an adverse effect? I mean, if I were on that program, I'd think, oh, no testing today.
Certainly.
Is that a problem?
So, we, because of that concern, we're very cautious about canceling. We only win, you know, there's a travel advisory or the roads are particularly treacherous. Well, we typically, it's maybe been once or twice per winter season since we've had the program operational that we have made the decision to cancel. It is typically only one session, not the whole day, so it's usually, you know, the morning or the evening session, whichever is most impacted by the weather, and we hope that the roads have improved by 12 hours later. We also do not make the announcement that testing will be canceled until within, just, you know, until within just a couple hours before testing is to begin, so that individuals, at the most, you know, they've got an extra couple of hours to play with in terms of time until the next scheduled test is set. So, we try to mitigate that risk, but it is balancing the risk of people seeing a window of opportunity to use a substance that they shouldn't compared with the risk of having people travel to the testing center during adverse weather conditions.
Thank you. Commissioner Kraft.
Yes. Under pre-trial services, you show 90% compliance rate. Now, how does that compare with national statistics?
So, what that is measuring is the amount of time that people are calling into the call-in system.
Right.
When they're supposed to be. I don't have a good comparison for that nationally because I don't know how many programs are set up in that way.
Okay. That's a fair answer.
I think that, you know, it's my hope that, you know, as we get further, you know, as I get my team assembled and we move forward as a department, the whole topic of pre-trial services will be something that's a key priority in terms of enhancing that program, continuing to build upon some of the changes that we made last year, getting those to become more ingrained in the criminal justice system so that they're utilized more frequently, and you'll probably see a whole different sort of report for pre-trial services as we make those changes.
Thank you.
I don't see any other questions. Okay, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Is there a motion to adjourn the Board of Corrections? There's a motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Kraft. Please vote.
Motion passes. All Commissioners voting yes.
We're now called to order the Board of Commissioners meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson?
Yes.
Commissioner Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Here.
Commissioner Duda?
Here.
Commissioner Kraft?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Mr. Chair.
Here. Item one is minutes and claims, approval of the minutes of the Douglas County Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, December 4th, 2018. Item B is approval of claims submitted for payment and process through Tuesday, December 11th, 2018. What's the will of the Board? Motion by Commissioner Duda, second by Commissioner Morgan.
Not, Kraft.
Kraft.
I'll be abstaining as there's a check in there to my company.
Motion passes. Commissioner Morgan abstaining, other Commissioners voting yes.
Item two is concern agenda. There's 12 items under concern agenda. What's the will of the Board?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would like to, and would like to speak on item, let's see, sorry. Item A.
Okay. Is there a motion, a second?
Yes, I'll make the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Morgan. David, you've been requested to speak to item A.
Good morning. Commissioner Douglas County Emergency Communications Director.
What I would like you to do, David, is we spoke about this contract that you've managed to negotiate, which is very, very significant. If you could, I'd like you to tell the Board what the important points are, and the public as well, what the main bullet points are of your efforts.
Sure. Sure, this is an inter-local agreement. It's not a contract as of yet. The contract will hopefully follow in the near future for this purchase, but this is an agreement between Orion, the original, regional interoperable communications committee or commission or group that got together to enlarge our regional area to include Sarpy County. The advantage of this will be that you'll have basically seamless communication, the same kind of communications capability we have already in our Orion region will extend to Sarpy. That's one of the advantages of it. The other advantages are where we then have a, what's called a dynamic system resiliency. In other words, a backup controller. The controller is pretty much the brains of your radio network nowadays because your radio networks are computer systems more than they are our basic radio systems like in the past. So, we would have a continuous, redundant, totally mirrored, dynamic system resilience controller. So, the controller, the brains of it, so if anything happened to our existing controller, the Sarpy County controller would automatically take over without any kind of human intervention. So, that's a positive. Another positive is there's cost savings in adding another entity to the Orion group in the future when it comes to our software purchases, software maintenance, software agreements. So, and the ultimate advantage of this is you'll have public safety responders having radio communications at the same level as Orion all the way through the region to now include Sarpy. On a side note, Dodge County has contacted the Orion Group, and you probably have read about that. They have contracted or are contracting for their county radio system to be upgraded. They have expressed an interest to also come on to the Orion Group at some time in the future. It's probably be a year or two before they're ready. So, the advantage of this, if you can take a map of our area and envision of this, is have a backup controller totally mirrored, anytime can take over in case one controller fails. You have a public safety unit or entity that could drive all the way from the farthest point of Dodge County to the southernmost part of Sarpy County and have the same radio communications capability as any other entity in that region. So, it works towards our goal of interoperability, redundancy, cost savings, and overall services to the public ultimately are going to be improved when people can communicate, your responders can communicate at a standardized level all through the region.
Great. Well, it's a remarkable and significant step toward something we hoped would happen for a long time, and I want to congratulate you for being one of the important players in getting this put together, and also thank the other counties for their interest in cooperating in the interest of public safety.
Thank you. The real credit for this needs to go to our Systems Administrator, Chris Allen. His work behind the scenes for, we've been working at this for a long time, basically since I've been here two years ago, but he has done a lot behind the scenes because these systems are so technical that it requires a lot of expertise and research development, and I would like to thank the people or my contacts down in Sarpy County on the public safety side who are excellent.
Good.
Well, thank you.
Any other questions?
Not for me. Thank you very much, David.
All right. Thank you.
Great report.
There's a motion, a second?
Motion.
No, there's already one. There's one, so I just want to make sure. Please vote.
I'm abstaining because of a relationship with Susan Clark's employee.
Okay.
Motion passes. Commissioner Morgan abstaining, other Commissioners voting yes.
Item three is recognition and proclamations. Item A is a resolution honoring the career of Alan R. Jackson, who is retiring December 14th, 2018, after working for Douglas County for 24 years. And item B is the recognition of the county employee, Charles Steiner, who is retiring from Douglas County Clerk Controller's Office after 18 years of service to the citizens of Douglas County. Now, Alan is not here, but I want to thank Alan personally for his service, particularly the work he's done down there in our Ventures Department. Will be later on the agenda, appoint a new person to replace him, but despite him not being here, I want to thank him not only for his, you know, service to the country, but to the department and what he's done. With that, Mr. Clerk, my understanding is you want to speak to item B.
Morning, Dan Ash, Douglas County Clerk. Before I get to Chuck Steiner, I just want to say we have, veterans can file their DD214s in the clerk's office, so we do have a relationship with the Veterans Service Office, and Al will sometimes come by to stop by the payroll office. And we have several people in the clerk's office that are quite fond of Al, so we're going to miss him. On to Charles Steiner, Chuck Steiner. Guess I feel like I've been coming up here far too often these last couple of years, but Chuck's another longtime county employee. He started off with Douglas County Information Services in 2000, and then in 2005, he was with DotCom, and then in 2006, he's been in the Clerk Controller's Office as an Oracle Functional Lead, and he's been there in that role ever since. He really plays a, he's behind-the-scenes person. You know, I think the majority of the public probably doesn't know who Charles Steiner is, but a lot of people that work for the county and DotCom and the Building Commission and even the City of Omaha, they know who Chuck is because he plays such a pivotal role in making sure that Oracle's working right. I mean, we use Oracle for so much of what we do, and if there's, you know, an issue, there could be some real problems. So Chuck plays a, one of the people that plays a real pivotal role in just making sure that our government operates. He's definitely going to be missed, not only because he's good at what he does, but just because he's a, a great guy. As far as him being knowledgeable, and I, a couple months ago, when we made, when Chuck, we made the announcement that Chuck was retiring, I ran into somebody who used to work in the clerk's office, and they came up to me, they didn't even say hello, they were just like, Chuck's retiring? And I was like, oh, yeah, hi, yeah, he's going to be gone in the middle of December. Like, what are you going to do? And so, yeah, so. We have a, we have a solid employee taking over for him, but I'll admit, there was a time where I was feeling a bit anxiety about it. And Chuck, everything about him is, you know, when we get phone calls, sometimes it is an Oracle issue, but there's also quite a few times where it's a issue with the Oracle user. But Chuck always listens and remains calm and will walk people through, you know, what they're, what they're doing wrong and help them out. And I think that's why people are going to miss him because when he, when there was an issue, he would work hard until it got fixed, and if there wasn't an issue, he was always kind and respectful in how he went about helping people figure it out. So. And last thing, I think you've heard me talk, I have quite a few funny people that work in the clerk's office, and he's up there, he's one of them. And I, if you all know him, it probably isn't that funny to you, but he's just, he can be kind of animated sometimes when he's talking, like when he gets a phone call that, you know, he doesn't know what's going on, or he gets an idea, you know, and he, it's just, he's a, I've gotten used to it over the years, but the other day, two weeks ago, he came in and kind of had one of those stories for me, and I was just thinking, I was like, man, I'm going to, I'm going to miss this. So. I'll just read the resolution real quick, if you don't mind. Whereas Douglas County, Nebraska recognizes that its employees are the county's most important asset and resource for providing quality service to the citizens of Douglas County. And whereas on July 24, 2000, Charles "Chuck" Steiner began working at Douglas County Information Services as a system analyst. And whereas during his time with DCIS, Chuck Steiner played an integral role in the implementation of Oracle as Douglas County's enterprise resource planning system. And whereas in August 2005, Chuck Steiner began working for the Douglas Omaha Technology Commission. And whereas on June 12, 2006, Chuck Steiner began working in the Douglas County Clerk Controller's Office as an Oracle Functional Lead and remained in that role up until his retirement from Douglas County. And whereas although Chuck Steiner was an employee of the County Clerk Controller's Office, he provided Oracle assistance to employees from every Douglas County Department, DotCom, the Omaha Douglas Building, Public Building Commission, and the City of Omaha. And whereas Chuck Steiner always desired to be helpful and professional and regularly made himself available to coworkers, consultants, and others when assistance was needed, even if it wasn't related to his job duties. And whereas Chuck Steiner always performed his duties with the intention of doing what was best for the citizens of Douglas County. And whereas Douglas County wishes to recognize Chuck Steiner on his retirement after 18 years of dedicated service. Now therefore be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board hereby recognizes Chuck Steiner for his dedicated, outstanding service to the residents and employees of Douglas County, and thankfully presents this resolution as testimony thereof dated this 11th day of December 2018. So, thank you.
Thank you. There is a motion and a second on A and B. Any other comment? Seeing none, please vote.
Mr. Chair, we actually did not hear who made the motion in the second.
I'll move.
Okay. You got it. Commissioner Cavendish, motion, second by, sorry.
Yes, thank you. And we are, give us one moment here. All right, thank you.
Please vote.
All commissioners voting yes.
Item four is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on a Board of Commissioners-related items not listed on today's agenda. Are there any citizens' comments?
If anybody else wants to speak first, please be free to do so. My name is Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha. I'd like to take a little bit different approach this morning in the name of transparency, a little humor maybe. Three transparent cups or shells, if you want to call them that. One could be a taxpayer, one could be a county board, one could be a city council, but generally under one of them is the taxpayer who picks up the bill for expenditures. Expenditures can be included, some of the, as mentioned on the radio by the mayor yesterday, philanthropics. Some of your expenditures go to philanthropics for programs, but doesn't that sort of come out of my pocket eventually? And most of these organizations probably raise money privately from donations. Why should they be getting donations from a city council or Douglas County Board? I'm not against all of them, but there, there is a point where when things have to be cut or sliced, maybe those are the ones that should be cut or sliced. In the name of transparency, as we often hear here, also, do you ever wonder why there's not more citizens down here today wanting to comment? A lot of them work. A lot of them just aren't able to keep up with the daily record and the various other things that really aren't that easily available. It's not reported in the newspaper, it's not reported on the local TV channels, and we don't all have cable. But yesterday, the mayor used that term in relation to various things that if we spend it, they will come. Well, interesting article in the World Herald the other day related to no dough, that, oh my goodness, the retail market has changed. We can't have, always have retail locations on the ground floor of these new buildings that are going up, a lot of them with tax increment financing, which again comes out of the taxpayers' thing eventually. So if, if the retail market has changed, maybe we're in a deep trouble here with all of the TIA financing. Of all the buildings that are mixed-use, high-rise apartments or high upscale apartments, small retail establishments, that they can't all compete against everybody, some of, some of them are going to fail, and then some of them are going to walk away, and maybe the owners of the buildings will walk away. But meantime, did they get an exemption from property taxes for 15 years? If they do walk away, who collects the property tax? Those are questions that citizens would like to know. But if the retail market has changed, maybe we better rethink some of our decisions. Thank you. And I've equated these to the Douglas County Board in honor of Mike Boyle and Mr. Cavendish.
Thank you. Any other comments?
For speaking for the citizen. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Marty Hosking, 7510 Cass Street. Just wanted to register my opposition to going forward with the Juvenile Justice Center as presented so far, as I've been informed so far. I want to register my interest in separating that from the spending that will occur to extend the Douglas County courthouse services badly needed, I understand. However, I would like to again register my opposition to mixing that with the juvenile justice proposal that is not consistent with the findings of the study that was done and funded by the county as to the best interests of the juveniles. In addition, there's been loud opposition by people who are either residents of and/or business owners in the area. For those of us who know a little thing or two, even if it's an armchair knowledge of good four corners development in walkable, creating walkable residential areas, we know that a block of anything that doesn't have good ground connection with the sidewalk, with pedestrians, and with the neighborhood does not help to grow the neighborhood, and that is a real need that we have in Omaha. I think many of you will agree that millennials are looking for places to build their lives and their businesses, and we really need to support them. And I feel that this is a step in the wrong direction to quote-unquote, "kill" another block with something that doesn't connect directly with the residential nature of, of the area. So, i.e., retail coffee shops, that sort of thing. Flatiron Restaurant needs our support to be able to continue to, to do well there and to contribute to that growth in that area. So I do have a lot of concern for that, and I hope that you will insist on clear numbers about what costs will be and what they will be for, for the justice, Juvenile Justice Center, and what costs might be entailed in remaining on the campus that it is currently, that is recommended as best practices in the field of juvenile justice. If we can spend less money in promoting that and building up that and renewing that, that is for the citizens of Omaha, for the fiduciary responsibility that you have to us the best option, or it should be done carefully. I was at a meeting recently where one of the commissioners was there, and I asked questions, and that commissioner did not have detailed answers about numbers and costs, and that disturbed me and it concerned me. You have a fiduciary responsibility to really look into this very deeply, and I feel that up till now that has not been done. And going forward, the way we are with the MUD thing, isn't still addressing the fundamental concerns that we have. So, thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Tyler Wilson. I'm a resident of Omaha. I'm here today to talk about the same thing I've talked about for almost the last six months now. You know, there was a, a meeting with the MUD Board of Directors, that Commissioner Duda was there, and there's some things that I kind of want to point out from that. I'd like to thank the MUD Board of Directors for having an open and transparent discussion about this matter that unfortunately hasn't been very transparent up until recently. You know, Commissioner Duda, you had said that the detention side of this might not even be part of the plan anymore. From every schematic that I've seen, it still is, and it's alarming. The other thing, you said that the Nebraska Crime Commission is on board with this project. There hasn't been a letter of intent, there hasn't been a needs assessment submitted to them, and all of those things have to take place before you can build a detention center or a jail, or whatever you want to call it. There are, there are things that need to happen in a process for this to continue. And I, I spoke here a while back about how the Nebraska Jail Standards Board had to sign off on A, B, and C before this project can go through, and I got looks of, you know, you have no idea what you're talking about. And here we are. And I really think that you as a board, you need to take two steps backward to go one step forward. Let's slow down, let's take good, hard looks at these things, and let's figure out the next step forward. Let's get a needs assessment done. Let's get a strategic plan done. None of these things that I've seen, none of these things I've been able to find on public record, where, where's the assessment that is a needs assessment that says this is going to happen if we build this new building? You know, the other thing is the allotted beds is going to be 48 beds. Well, in a correctional facility, you can only use 75 to 80% of those beds. So how about rather than building the building and then dropping the population, we drop the population to that 48, 35 mark, and then we build the new building? Let's take the programs that you say that we're going to implement, let's implement them now, fine to them, fine tune them to when they work flawlessly, and then we build the new building to accommodate those things. It doesn't, it doesn't make sense to me to build the new building and then do all these things. Why don't we do these things and then make the largest expenditure in the history of Douglas County? It's, it's backwards to me, and it doesn't make sense. And we've been asking for six months for that clarity and to justify how this makes sense, and we don't get it. And we've been asking, and we've been asking, and we've been asking, and we don't get it. You know, I attended the 501(c)(3) meeting yesterday in 903, and it really blows my mind that we make this big deal about how we're going to be transparent and there's going to be a website for things, and yet at the bottom of the agenda, it says, you must email your questions prior to asking them so we know what you're asking. Like, how is that transparent? How is that being open and having open discussion? It does, it just doesn't make sense to me. And for the last six months, I've been asking for that clarity, and I've been asking for those answers, and I haven't got them. So I asked you today, like I've asked you for the last six months, slow down, let's take some time to figure this out. Let's take some time to figure out if we're going to use the DotCom building and the OHA building, or if we're going to use the MUD building. You're still waiting on a response from MUD, whether they're going to sell the building. You're still waiting on litigation to finish with the DotCom and OHA block. So why is there such a big rush? Take your time, slow down, plan it accordingly. No one argues that we don't need a courthouse annex. Nobody. Commissioner Boyle and I went and walked through the public defender's office. They're cramped, it's ridiculous, and we need to fix that. So let's build a courthouse annex. But let's wait on a detention center to make sure that's actually the answer to the problem, and let's make sure that we actually, truly need it. Thank you.
Anyone else? I'd ask you to stop the clapping, please.
Luis Jimenez, 518 North Fortieth Street. Good morning. I want to comment on your rules of order for this board. Rule eight authorized committees states, "The chair shall appoint the following committees whose membership may consist of two to three commissioners." Administrative Services Committee is listed under that rule. Recently, the Administrative Services Committee produced an alternative plan which proposed building a 12-story justice center in downtown and keeping youth detention at the current location. It is a proper proposal which required official reconsider, or official consideration. Furthermore, on your rules, your rule 12, appearances before the board, item B, citizens' remarks during any citizens' comments. remarks during any citizens' comments, periods, debate of board actions, and during any public hearing may not exceed five minutes. Citizens' remarks may be extended with consent of the Chair of the Board of the County Commissioners. It doesn't say anything about, uh, limiting debate. Proacting engagement between a Commissioner and a citizen is okay. You can proceed with it. However, there is a note on this agenda prohibiting this. It says, "However, under the Open Meetings Act, agenda items should give some notice of the matter to be considered by the board so that the public will know which matters are under consideration. As a result, the board will not debate or take action on any item presented during citizens' comments." Nobody's asking you to take action when we speak to you. We want you to listen, we want to know what you guys feel or speak on these matters. So, now, you didn't vote on it? You didn't vote on this? Ask the county attorney if you think I'm wrong. Through this year, there's been talk about words being important. Even Bruce Carpenter of J C D C chimed in, um, chimed in, and he said that terms matter, words matter, it's a nonprofit, he says. He'll tell you any shit you wanna hear. You really will.
Hey, whoa, 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 Louise.
What's that?
I'm gonna ask you not to use profanity, if so, I'm gonna cut you off.
I'm almost done, sir.
No, do you understand what I just told you? Do you understand why I just asked you?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna be clear.
Okay, well, I apologize for that, but he really will. If I cannot, um, so my last piece is to do with, uh, infrastructure. And I did not, uh, you know what? I'll save that for another time because I didn't completely edit this correct, so it fits with my comments, so I'll hold off on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Scene nine? Sorry.
I would just like a point of clarification that there will be citizen comments available during the item seven A, financing discussion of the M U D purchase. That topic's been touched on a couple of times here this morning so far.
It's an agenda item, it will be discussed. If you're going to discuss that, then you should wait till that item.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Scene nine? We'll go on, I'm gonna do a quick alteration here and go to item F in Human Services. That item is item one, approval of the Veteran Service Committee's recommendation to hire Benson L. Moore as the Douglas County Veteran Service Officer. My understanding, sir?
If I may, Commissioner Duda. This does fall to my committee. I would like, I'm very pleased to introduce the head of our Veteran Service Committee, Dr. Stephen Youngberg, who is going to introduce our new staff person.
The committee has done detail of interviewing the participants for the position, and our recommendation is Benson L. Moore. He's an excellent choice to run that particular office of Veterans Affairs, Veterans Services.
Just wanna say, I thank Dr. Youngberg and the rest of the committee members for the nomination. It's a privilege and an honor to serve in that capacity as Director, and I look forward to continuing the culture and climate for the better served veterans. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Is there a motion, a second?
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Duda, second by Commissioner Boyle. Please vote.
Motion passes, all Commissioners voting yes.
The Commissioner's gonna meet you, so if you wanna come on up. Okay, we're gonna go back up to item eight, under committee discussion, which is finance. Item one is the budget report, Commissioners Boyle and Morgan.
As presented, and now we are having some meetings with Joe Lorenz, and then we'll be involving all the Commissioners as we continue on.
Quick comment. What, what we're meeting for is, um, PJ and I are talking, Commissioner Morgan and I are talking to Mr. Lorenz about places where we might be able to, uh, do some cutting in budgets. We'll check in with the elected officials, we're not gonna be doing this, and the department heads without their participation. But we have a, a real serious need for treating the mentally ill, and we need to come up with some money. And in cooperation with all the other board members, we need to decide on what we wanna do, what our priorities are, and I think this rises to the top in a lot of cases. Not only for people who are incarcerated, people who are suffering from mental illness on a daily basis. So we wanna try to do something to answer this need because it is, it's critical. We have people, I think we have seventy-two people waiting for placement in a psychiatric unit, and that is just not acceptable. So that's what we're heading for, is trying to figure out how to respond to the, come up with some money to do some mental health work. So I appreciate the cooperation so far, and you'll, we'll keep you informed.
Thank you. We'll move to item two, discussion of the resolution to direct Douglas County Attorney's Office and the Douglas County Public Properties Director to formally offer to purchase the M U D real estate and complete purchase agreement on behalf of the, of Douglas County for six million dollars. Miss, uh, to the, I'll address the, ask the county attorney to address the context of what we have for.
Teresa Yuric, Deputy County Attorney. So we've placed on the board's agenda for consideration for discussion for today, an item that would possibly lead us into more formal discussions with M U D. It's our office's intent to bring this back again next week for action. So today will be discussion to talk about whether we should enter into more formal discussions with M U D about possibly purchasing their property, which is across the street from the courthouse.
Okay, thank you. I will open it up for any comment now from the public, and then we'll address some more.
Hello all, Brian Smith, six five one six Emmett Street. I served on the Board of Trustees for the Business Ethics Alliance here in Omaha for seven years. And one of the, uh, actions that the, the Business Ethics Alliance took is it did a, an assessment of the ethical atmosphere of Omaha, the key ethical components of what we do as a city. Those are accountability, community responsibility, financial vitality, integrity, and moral courage. And these five ethical standards are what they determined drive Omaha. Unfortunately, as business ethics, they may not apply here to community service. I would like to call attention, I have a transcript of the M U D board meeting from last week, December fifth, in which Commissioner Duda spoke and addressed a question that Gwen Howard presented in regards to federal approval for a detention center. Clerk Duda said, "I can tell you that the state jail standards board, which is what I've always worried about, is on board." That was on December fifth. Unfortunately, that is a false statement. As of yesterday, I spoke with Denny Makumber, who is the Director of the Jail Standards Division at the Nebraska Crime Commission. And he confirmed in an email here that I have that he yesterday received a letter from Commissioner Rogers dated December third, sent by Karen Cole Monday at two twenty-five P M announcing the county's intent to build. He also said that a representative from H D R forwarded the architectural renderings and the chin report, which was in his email, or he says, "in his mail" on Monday morning. I will begin reviewing the documents we have received on Friday. The jail standards division has, is not on board with a new detention center. That is a misrepresentation to the M U D board. There is no such approval because they have not rece, uh, as of yesterday, uh, yesterday afternoon, they had not received the documents, and they have not reviewed them. They have not approved your intent to build a detention center. Unfortunately, this is not the first time that a member of this commission has spread misinformation regarding the status of a proposed detention center. Several members of this commission have also misled the public to facilitate this real estate deal by saying that children would not be in shackles. One of you got that in the World Herald this week. This board, this county board, does not make that determination. That determination is made by the Douglas County Sheriff's Office. Guess what? Have you talked to Captain Sellers? I have. Captain Sellers says, "This policy is made by the Douglas County Sheriff's Office and will not change." As elected officials, you've used your offices to grant yourselves private oversight of the largest building project in county history, followed yesterday by no bid contracts for campaign donors. You're voting, you're avoiding a public vote on tax increase, trying to slide this through back channels. The time for trust is over. Commissioner Rogers, I've repeatedly asked you during the course of the last five months to explain how a forty-eight-bed facility would accommodate the eighty kids that we currently hold in detention, and during one of these meetings, you said, "Trust me." The tr, time for trust has passed. This board has repeatedly violated the public trust and our shared sense of ethics. You are spreading misinformation to accomplish your goals and are not on the side of the people. In light of these issues, and in this issue we're discussing, a six million dollar real estate acquisition, I ask for a delay of the vote, not for a week, but until Commissioner Rogers can produce a document that shows specifically his paradigm shift using county data, not the chin report, which shows six statistically flawed forecast models ranging from a hundred and thirty-three kids in detention to negative one hundred and two. And unless you're operating a juvenile maternity ward, I'm not sure how you get fewer kids coming out of detention than going in. You need to reveal specific programs that allow for the use of this six million dollar acquisition to build your jail. We deserve the right to know who, what, when, where, why, and how this paradigm shift will be accomplished, and I'm asking that Commissioner Rogers send this plan to the county clerk by Monday, December seventeenth, so it can be reviewed by the public and Board of Commissioners before a vote is taken.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Captain Eric Sellers, Douglas County Sheriff's Office, sixteen sixteen Leavenworth. I wanna clear up one statement which isn't completely true. When we spoke four months ago or three months ago, said at times, "We may not need to shackle them, at times we will shackle." We still will not give a blanket statement that they will or will not be shackled. There are times juveniles will be shackled because they're a risk, and many times, they won't need to be if we move across the building. We're moving them down a hall from a secure facility right into court, no, we won't shackle them. So I wanna make sure that's clear here. When you say what I told, you're not saying the whole story. I told you when we spoke, there are times we will and times we will not. I won't let the public determine what our policies are. So I just wanna make sure that's clear. Those who are concerned about the juveniles, if this building isn't at another location, they're gonna be transported in a van where they're held all day. If it's across the street, if we don't need them, they're gonna come across the hall, they will not be shackled, they will then go back to their, the youth center, whatever you wanna call it here, and they can continue with their programs they have, and they won't be stuck here all day. So that is our official statement. Policies have not changed yet because we're way too far into this, and if you have any questions.
Thank you, Captain.
No problem.
Well, Captain, you do have a question.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Governor, sorry.
Currently, Lieutenant?
Captain.
Captain. Currently, um, the transport that you handle from the youth center on Forty-second Street to the court facilities here involve how many children per day on average?
It changes, but let's just say an average of six to seven.
Okay. I, I don't know if it was you, but we asked for a survey in August to take a month and see, and it, I think averaged about four, but, you know, four to six would be fair, do you think?
Yeah, there's, there's not a large number.
Right. And some days, there are none?
That could be accurate.
Okay. The policy to shackle those individual childrens is a, is a department policy, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And that's based on what?
It's, the policy, it's always been that way, and it just, we haven't looked at it since.
I understand. But, um, other than we've always done it this way, is there an articulable reason to do that?
Well, you could say it's for a couple different reasons, for our security, for their security, so nobody runs or attempts to run.
Right. And, um, I'm sure that the Sheriff's Department studies best practices in other jurisdictions where children are transported without shackling. Are you aware of those?
No, I'm not.
Okay. Would it be helpful for the department to familiarize themselves with situations similar to the one that we currently have here, transporting children, where shackles are not used?
Yeah, it could be, but I guess the main thing is, we, we can't have a blanket statement, they will never be shackled. There are always gonna be situations where a juvenile being transported in a van will be shackled, and there are other times where maybe they don't need to be, but that's gonna be on a case-by-case basis.
Now, currently, there are holding facilities in the Hall of Justice for individuals, children, and adults awaiting disposition or adjudication, call it what you will. And those are under the auspices of the Sheriff's Department, right?
Correct.
Okay. And when an individual is taken from that holding facility in the Hall of Justice now to the courtroom and back, are they shackled?
Yes.
Okay. So in this new facility, you're saying that, that that would be the same, or that there would be a change of policy there?
We will, if we're leaving the detention facility from one door.
Correct, the holding facility, right.
Walking down a twenty-foot, thirty-foot hallway to the courtroom, in most cases, they will not be, need to be shackled. But there are gonna still be cases where they, you know, murderers, anybody that's a flight risk, or they, they're, they're fighting, we're gonna have to determine that. There are cases, they still will be shackled.
Okay. And is that the standard that you use in the Hall of Justice currently relative to transporting these people from the holding facility to the courtroom?
No, everybody, everybody is shackled right now.
Everybody is, okay. So you're gonna do a judgment call in, uh, under the new scenario, whether or not it's necessary for public safety, either of the individual or the officer or the public at large to use and employ shackles?
Well, there are a few diff, a couple differences here. Now, when we leave our holding facility up on sixth floor, if you will, the juveniles, we're going across a rotunda into areas that are no longer secured. You know, there are members of the public or family there and available. In the new, if, if everything goes across the street, everything will stay and remain in a secure hallway until that person goes in front of a judge, and there will not be access to the public.
And the security for that facility will be provided by the Sheriff's Department?
Yes.
And that'll involve new personnel that are currently not on staff down here providing security of that complex?
That's correct.
And have you estimated the scope and cost of that security detail?
Um, we've, we've talked about it, but until we, until we get further in the process or we know exactly what it's gonna look like, it's hard to tell.
So you have a six-story Hall of Justice over here that you currently provide this security for, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And you have a detail specifically dedicated to that security, correct?
Correct.
How big is that detail?
As far as manpower?
Right.
Approximately forty people.
I'm sorry?
Forty.
Say again, I, I, I'm sorry.
Approximately forty.
Four zero?
Yes.
Forty people. And do you have the idea, and if you don't, just say you don't, and we'll find it, what the annual cost of that forty-person detail is?
I do not.
Okay. This is a six-story structure that we're talking about in the Hall of Justice, correct?
Correct.
And that'll be approximately the same, or maybe a little larger across the street? Is that right? As far as you know?
As far as I know.
Okay. Thanks.
Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you for coming down. I think Brad will recall, I did ask if it was almost daily that we're transporting the youth down with two deputies, and he did.
the youth down with two deputies, and he did tell me that it was most every day that that occurred. And I see that Brad's here shaking his head, and I'm not trying to put anyone on the spot. I appreciate what you're doing, and I understand why you have to have those needs at certain times and not other needs. I visited several of the facilities, one being in Maricopa County, and they have a facility where everything's there, the courts, the detention center, attorneys, and so on. And I saw them coming down the hallway, and they're not shackled, just what you said. And that was a case that we saw up in Minneapolis and St. Paul in downtown facility where everything's together. So I thank you for the work all of you do as a sheriff. And by statute, the Sheriff's Office is the one, they are the ones, to take care of the courts in our facilities here. And that's by statute. So I thank you for the work and your people's work, because it's not always an easy task. And that's for certain. And you don't always know the situation that could and has occurred in a number of places around our country.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
So thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
For your information. The, and I also appreciate the testimony that was very enlightening from Brian. I, I just want to say that, you know, I think one of the, in all these conversations that have been taking place, there, there's some talk of, you know, categorizing the people who are in the youth center, call them children, call them kids, and they are and they aren't. I asked the Director, Brad Alexander, for not identifying the people, but tell us who's in there for what charges. I mean, it's a, it's kind of a tough, it is a very tough crowd. You know, people talk about we need open space and green lawns and all that. That's not exactly who we're dealing with. And so that's why the shackles are necessary, that's why the Sheriff's Office makes these decisions. No one wants to see anybody shackled, and certainly a young person, because it does set them in a path, helps to set them unfortunately, in a path that we don't want them to go on, but they are already on that path. You know, we have, I know, the list that I got from the Director of the youth center, one person's in there for second degree, accused of secondary murder. There are three that are in there for felonious assaults with weapons and also domestic violence and so forth. These are not the youngsters that you see when you go to a high school or someplace necessarily. These are people who are, are off the rails. And so we need to keep that in mind, and the Sheriff's Office will take care of what has to happen. No one wants to see them in shackles, but unfortunately, because of their illnesses and their attitudes, they have to be. And so I appreciate what you're doing, and that you came up and the work that you do. I do want to mention something. I received a phone call from Commissioner Rogers while I was out of town, Merry Thanksgiving, and talked about the MUD building. And he said something to me that I know that he meant, but I cannot get this communicated very well. He talked about the necessity of having all the services and all the, all the youth and all the backup and all this sort of thing, met everybody right in one place. And I said, you know, Chris, what makes you think that I don't want to do that? It's just the location. So I'll talk, well, I'll say it now. I, I think the situation, the location at 42nd Street offers much more opportunity for flexibility. If we find out that we have to exceed the number of beds, we've got space where we can do something. In this building, we won't. We will be locked in to a certain amount of space on a floor downtown that there's just nothing we can do, except, oh, maybe we'll move the county attorney out. So, I mean, we're dedicated to that building if we do this. And the comments that Mr. Hoskey made are absolutely on point. I was speaking with Mr. Borgerson yesterday about the need to begin holding these 501(c)(3) meetings here at the beginning of our county board meeting, because it, it needs to be much more public. And it is public upstairs in the 903, there's no question about that. But it is, it's really the law, but it's not the spirit of the open meetings law, because people can't attend, they don't get to see this on Cox Cable, whatever it is. And perception is what matters, and we did talk about that. And the county board, we think, I don't, but the majority of the board, I believe, thinks we've been totally transparent on this whole operation. And we have been, according to law, but not according to what we should be doing with the public. The taxpayers are not fully informed about this, and it is the perception. So we need to, we need to get up to speed on the perception, because that is what matters. So in any event, I really appreciate your comments, and I appreciate what people have said so far. So those are the comments I want to make to this point. Thank you, Captain.
No, thank you.
Commissioner Craft?
Yes. I'm on the board at the Autism Center of Nebraska. And one of the counselors there was talking about one of their students, our youth, who was transported in shackles, and how traumatic it was that it took three months of counseling when he was only in the youth center for a day and a half, because he was transported in shackles to the courthouse. He was not found guilty of anything, but the trauma and the effect on our staff at the Autism Center was amazing. And that is one of the reasons why. I don't think you'd shackle that young person if he's down the hall from the courtroom. How do you treat special needs youth and young people?
You know, we, we don't see special needs a lot that I'm aware of. Right now, everybody's treated the same as far as being shackled. I guess the thing I want to go a little further on here is, most juveniles, when they, when they go to, when they're arrested and they go to the youth center, intake will release those that do not belong there. There are those there that have violent crimes on their record and/or they need placement. A lot of those juveniles, or if you want to call them offenders, are coming over for murder, robbery, there are a portion there. And for those charges, I don't see anything changing, or for our security, they will still be shackled.
And I would agree, if they're in for murder or violent crime, that's, that's different. We need to protect you and the public. You meaning the sheriffs.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, and the courts. But so many of the young people commit crimes because they have mental illness, because of situations that shouldn't happen in the first place, such as family violence and the continuation of it. So, yeah, my concern is, and Commissioner Rogers has explained many times how we can get to 48 beds, except people don't want to accept that explanation. And if they read the studies I've read, six different studies, including the Chin Report, not including the Chin Report, excuse me, having the youth near the courthouse is a tremendous asset for the youth and their families, because families are a very important part of this. And some of the opponents to this don't realize how important the family is. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Commissioner Dooley?
Thank you. One of the, one of the things, and I, Minneapolis and St. Paul were very educational for me, and I appreciate your being up there, and it was interesting to see actually how the, how the system can be greatly improved upon. And I get that there will always be some kids that need to be handcuffed and shackled. I, I get that. But I think that the way we are going, we're going to be able to eliminate the vast majority of the times that we are having to do that. What, Commissioner Boyle, this, this is for you. One of the points that they made in Minneapolis is that if we keep referring to them as those kids, we'll never take ownership. If we say, "We don't see those kids in high school," these kids are all off the rails, even if they're pre-adjudicated, we already know, they're off the rails. Until we start saying, "These are our children, and they may not all be off the rails," that's the purpose of the court, is to find out. But until we start treating these as our children, we're never going to take ownership, we're never going to try to improve the system. That was a real important point for me. These are our children, and we're trying to figure out the best future, the best way to handle our children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I know. Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I appreciate your comments, and I agree with him, Commissioner. What I'm talking about are these young people are in trouble, off the rails is maybe not quite right, but they are accused of things, and they're, some of them are dangerous, some of them are not. But, you know, I've heard over and over, and I think all of us have, that people want to see us stop, get it, get in front of this to try to prevent those young people from getting into trouble. That's really going to be difficult, but that's part of what we're charged with, we're being asked to do. And I think the school systems and all the rest of them have to participate. But obviously, there are children. I, I don't, I'm not really, I'm almost offended by what you say, but I'm probably the most liberal member of this board.
I know.
And so, I mean, they are, you know, I'm a, I'm a definitely bleeding heart kind of a guy.
Well, I, I recognize that, I appreciate it.
Okay, so, I mean, you can see it from where you are. So anyway, I mean, I, I, we all care about families. I mean, families are, and that's what Mark said, we don't, we're all on the same page here. All we're talking about is the location. And I feel that, as I said, the youth center, 42nd Street, offers more flexibility, and I think, you know, we have everything there, including the judges and the courts, something that I, some of us have supported in the past and now have changed into this downtown location, which is puzzling. So anyway, I mean, I appreciate what you say, I agree with it, they're our children, but, and we do care about families, Commissioner Craft, there's no question about that, all the people here, the speakers and everybody. But I would like to ask Constance to come down. Yes, would you please come forward? Because you had some comments I'd like, you said to me one time, please come forward, will you? She has something to say about Minneapolis. She lived there, and she told me something I just want her to bring up about the young people, how they're, our children are treated up there, really, and what, what I think. If you would step up, Constance, and give your name, do you mind, Mr. Chair?
Constance Myrendorff.
Okay, now, we talked the other day about what was going, I think we were at the coffee shop, and we were talking, we met about this subject. And one of the things that you said about Minneapolis was that there is an off-site place where these young people are taken.
Yes.
So this is not exactly all impacting, not, not one downtown location, there are others, aren't there?
For pre-adjudicated?
Would you please, and give your name?
Yes, Constance Myrendorff, Omaha. We were chatting, I wasn't sure what you were going to ask me.
But that's, that's-
There is a facility west of town in Minnetonka, about 16 to 18 miles west of Minneapolis. I lived up there for 14 years, I'm very much aware of where the detention center is. And it's not in a, it's not in an area like our, our area that we're talking about. It's the county home school. And yes, it is post-adjudicated, however, that, it's not an either-or. If our kids are kept here for 30 to 50 days, for whatever reason, we should be doing something with them therapeutically, helping them to develop life skills, helping them to get their credits, which they're doing, they're earning credits all the time, it's a, it's a great program. They're doing yoga now, so that's a very important physical and spiritual thing for them. So why is it that we are so concerned about the pre-adjudication kids, and then we send them to, I don't know, Arizona, we send them to outstate Nebraska, we send them to Iowa? Where do we send them? And how much money do we spend? Only once they're adjudicated. I mean, we've got them, we need to do something with them pre-adjudication, it doesn't matter whether it's downtown or on 42nd Street. I agree with you, 42nd is the best possible place for them. I'm, I'm really concerned about not only the kids, first and foremost, because I've read several studies too, and what you're proposing flies in the face of the, the Chin study over and over and over again. I've, I've read it very thoroughly. So we need to take a step back, look at 42nd Street as a viable option, not only for the, the courtrooms and the kids, but, you know, the, the attorneys as well. Lots of options there.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that, Constance. Thank you.
Commissioner Dooley?
Thank you. Both, both Ramsey and Hennepin Counties, when we went up to visit, they both, in addition to their juvenile detention center, which is co-located with their juvenile courts, they do have a treatment center off-site for post-adjudicated kids. Not what we do. We're not in that business. I'm not saying we shouldn't. The state is woefully inadequate, obviously, with our judges sending juveniles to the Lincoln Regional Center and all these things, because there's nowhere else to put them. But it's not the county's responsibility, historically, to take care of kids once they are sentenced. That's the state's responsibility at that point. Please don't confuse what Minneapolis and St. Paul are doing when they assume some of the state's responsibilities up there. Maybe we should be looking at setting up a treatment center, but that's another conversation for another day. That would be in addition to the juvenile detention center, a separate entity with a separate function.
Well, let me say this, I, I don't want to, the discussion today is about the, the land. And I, I'm fine with bleeding a little bit, but I don't want to go back into the other piece, that, that's been decided. So I'm just saying that to the public, when you have your comments to try to keep it on the land, I don't, I do not want to have to say, I, I don't want to be hard with this. If it bleeds a little bit, that's fine, because it's kind of there. So Commissioner Boyle, one last comment?
I only want to say that I, I think that the impression is that, you know, this thing in Minneapolis was this beautiful tower, and everything was done in this one place, when that's not the case. We were told that these juveniles are there forever, and this is how they're treated, and then they're miraculously cured. No, they're not. They're found guilty and they're sent to another spot, there is another location. So I'm just saying, we're all on the same page, it's just a question of location, just location. We care about families, we care about the children, you know, we need to care about cost, but I'm just saying, location is what I'm talking about. It makes much more sense, in my opinion.
Okay. Captain, uh, thank you. I don't see anything else.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
What?
Everybody gets called up, but me is-
I, you got a hand up? Okay.
Yeah, my light's been on, I've been waving at you.
Good morning.
Everybody else gets called up.
Because I'm seeing them. If you, the light doesn't work, so I don't look at the light.
I don't know what I have to do.
Well, you got it now.
Okay. Well, to the question that you raised relative to the land and, and what we're talking about in terms of facilities on 42nd Street or facility downtown, the resolution that we are asked to entertain today in its third whereas says Douglas County also desires to provide the least restrictive and most appropriate setting for juveniles in a community-based, modern, secure, and therapeutic facility with close proximity to the community and public services necessary to effectively treat and restore juveniles in Douglas County. Now, whether they're pre-adjudicated or post-adjudicated, I, I appreciate as a lawyer that distinction. But what you saw in Minnesota were two facilities that dealt with youth, whether they're pre-adjudicated or post-adjudicated. The one that you were shown holds them for about seven days as they're processed through a much more expediated adjudication system than we enjoy in Douglas County. And it'd be great if we had one that could dispose of pre-adjudication in seven days. We don't enjoy that. So we have an average stay of, rather than seven days, which you saw in the holding facility in downtown Minnesota, Minneapolis, a much slower system, which results in 50-day stays. And this apparently captures that idea. You got kids for 50 days, how about some therapy? How about some effective treatment to restore the youth that we are responsible for? So I understand you keep using these two phrases that are terms of art in the legal profession, pre-adjudication and post-adjudication. I wish you'd have drilled down on that a little bit when you went to Minnesota, because you would have found that the seamless treatment of their youth recognizes that they are still youth, pre-adjudicated or post-adjudicated, is about the programs. And the programs that they find up there are most appropriately applied in this more open campus setting of the county school, far away from downtown Minneapolis, where they're held for an average of seven days.
Before whoever comes next, let me say, you, you're mixing, you're mixing apples, oranges, cherries, berries, and strawberries. None of that has to, to do with this in some respect, because the discussion along with the buildings has been programs, you've had programs presented before you, there's been talk about the programming. So to put that in one- So, to put that in one deal is a, is, is kind of disingenuous in some degree. If you want to talk about the process and all that degree, it's never been just about the bill. And everybody said this about everybody involved. So, that's the attorneys, the courts, and also the states. And Minnesota, and it's just as very, is more progressive than us in some degree, and has been at this longer. So, they should be where they're at to some degree. That's why we visited them, to look at their model, to get there. So, I, I just want to state that distinction for the point of that. You, you've mixed up things that are not even relevant to the point in the system where we're at. So, with that, who's ever next, please come forward.
Good morning. Kathleen Jim Rosie, Omaha, Nebraska. With all due respect to all parties involved, I know that we all care about our youth in detention and our families, and many of you on the board have worked on this subject for a very long time and have a ton of experience talking to a lot of people about what is best for our community. I, I really appreciate Mr. Brian Smith's comments and some others that have also taken the time to understand the many different facets of this project. And there is a lot. I mean, there is a whole lot here. I was at the M U D meeting. After the M U D meeting last week, we did, a, a small group of us went over and toured Douglas County Youth Center. It was not my first visit there, but it was thorough and interesting. And I think that what I heard was a lot of these kids wait sixty to ninety days for any kind of mental health treatment. There is that much lacking in that piece for these guys. And to say that that's a small thing is, I mean, that's a huge part of what we should be looking at. And as you pointed out, it's not the county's responsibility, but the state's. But I think my, when I first heard the plan for having everything together in this beautiful, brand-new, shiny package where all of the services, it sounded fantastic. But as I've listened to folks that are in the field and people that have interest in not just the, the tax base that would erode in the Flatiron District, not just the damage for potential for an emerging district that could attract people to downtown Omaha. If you look at Blackstone, if you look at Dundee, if you look at Benson, you know, these are neighborhoods that are built around the history of the buildings there. And then, you know, some nice new shiny things are a fine thing. But to take a city block like M U D, and even if we're preserving those buildings, I am still, because I have a restaurant at Seventeenth and Howard, obviously, I have a lot of vested interests. But I have a lot of people that work for me that also have a vested interest. I have neighbors who do not want to live between two jails. I have had people in the building that love living in the Flatiron Hotel that say the likelihood of them hanging into the neighborhood if we have a jail to our north and a jail to our south, you know, that neighborhood, that it really does put kind of a stake in the heart of our emerging little district. So, I'm an inarticulate speaker. I never want to get up here because I know that, you know, there's so much I don't know. But I'm trying to understand why we can't take the time to talk about why we can't, why it has to be, and I've read it in the paper from different commissioners, that it has to be downtown. The kids have to be downtown. And now it's my understanding that those kids will not have windows in that high-rise. Terrible. That's a bad thing. And at D C Y C, they do actually have a courtyard in the middle where they, you know, a little bit of money and you could have a nice green space out there for those guys. And a lot of room to build, and we already own it, and there's a whole lot of topics there that a lot of people know that I don't fully understand. But not good for the taxpayers possibly, because it seems that we wouldn't have enough room for the kids that we would need to house. That's what I heard last week at D C Y C. Two, not good for the neighborhood at all. Bad thing. And, yeah, kids, neighborhood, taxpayers. I, I just wish that we could take some time, and I personally feel like we, as taxpayers, are being railroaded right now. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Where was next?
Thank you. Luis Jimenez, five eighteen North Forlia Street. Commissioners, I might have supported the M U D building and block for your youth detention. There is room on the block for a courtyard dedicated to the troubled youth, but I feel I've acquired more knowledge regarding this issue. D L R chin court space study showed that restricted small site in downtown has a con that future construction is more difficult and expensive. They also say, "A review of recently completed juvenile detention facilities nationwide suggests that low-rise or at-grade solutions are preferred in order to maximize views to the outdoors, natural lighting, connection to the nature, the acts, and access to outdoor recreation." So, this talk about how light comes in through a shaft or what angle is misguided. It really is. So, I, I hope you listen to these words very carefully. A note from the infrastructuralist. "If infrastructure cannot adapt, then it should cease. Infrastructure is required to make perpetual adjustments to its form and scale as it traverses ever-changing contexts. It must resist the unchecked urge to rule. If it cannot, then it should cease to act. Neoliberal development and its imperialist tendencies do not accommodate the diversity of constituents that they entangle. The stakeholders do not solely consist of the investors. The immediate gratification of beneficiaries is short-sighted and without exception results in a collective net loss for future generations of humans and non-humans alike." Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob Perrin, eleven oh one South Thirty Sixth Street. What I would like to do today on this particular subject is talk about the things that can't talk for themselves, and those are the buildings and our history. They're sitting there totally defenseless. It's up to us to recognize them and to take care of them. And the M U D building is pretty easy to see that that's a magnificent structure and should be preserved so we can educate our, our population and our young kids yet to be born. But we also have the garage that's next to the M U D building that should also be preserved. That's a magnificent piece of an old Cadillac garage that's still intact. And when you sit in the Flatiron and look out the windows, you see a structure that you don't see anyplace else. You see a point in time and a point in history that speaks loudly to the progress of our community. So, we have the automobile sales building that has historic value. We have the M U D building. We have the garage in the M U D building, and we have the Flatiron, we have the law building. We have a collection of magnificent buildings. So, direct your architects to pay specific attention to the value that's in the property already and what exists, rather than just looking at it from an attitude of nothing has value, let's rip it all down. Because each one of those buildings have an enormous value to us today and to future generations to understand how they got to where they are and what kind of things we passed through. So, let's, let's get a committee together to study the historic values of our property and our neighborhood and our districts. Let's get some historians. Let's get some architects that have expertise in that area. Have them give you the input of what you really have to work with, no matter what property or what direction you go. Thanks.
Thank you. Who else?
Larry Store, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue. Six eight one three two. As I was going through our presentation kit there today, I had to stop and think that, my God, this looks more like a public school board meeting or an I E P meeting than it does a juvenile justice meeting or Douglas County Board meeting. I flipped through there, and it talks about I E P plans and education plans and finishing your degree, your high school diploma. How many graduated? How many were black? How many were white? How many were Asian? My tax dollars paying for all this? Why can't that be done in the school system? Why don't we do it before they get sent out of school, before they get kicked out of the classroom? Can we not tell our teachers and our administrators that this belongs in the schools? Or in the church? Or in the family? It doesn't belong at this podium. Our kids are being taken away from us. The Nazis did that. We're going to educate your kids. Your kids belong to us? That's true. Look it up. The state has laws now that will knock on your door and look for that kid that's six months old. We have a learning community council that wants to do that. And then wants to send the parents to the parent university, because they can't do, they can't raise their own kids. We have outsiders, progressives, that are telling us, "We know better than you do." And that's got to stop. It's unconstitutional and it's unfair. And, and Mark, I'd only like to say to you that, uh, the families, okay. The families don't always get into it. And again, it's, a lot of it has to do with those privacy laws. That, you know, you, if I had a son in high school, I could not request his individual education records according to the privacy laws or the interpretation of that. Maybe it's mostly the interpretation. Many instances where I, as a grandparent, have been told, I'm not entitled to some of that either, even when I'm there with the parent and with the grandson. No, you're not entitled to that. But if you read I D E A and you read the education laws, the intent of them, that is not the intent. The intent is to get the whole family involved. And I'm sick and tired of professionals and do-gooders saying, "Oh, well, we know better, and you're not entitled to come. You're not entitled to listen. You're not entitled to offer input." Best practices aren't necessarily best. Put it back where it belongs, starting with the home and the community and the schools. It doesn't belong here. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Name's Tyler Wilson. I'm a resident of Omaha. So, there's, there's one thing that's a common factor in both the M U D property and the O H A dot com building property. Both of them have historic buildings. Both of them have historic buildings that need to be preserved. And the M U D building, there's that nice wonderful clause that says you can't tear down the building. You can't do anything to the building, to the exterior, for fifty years, which is fantastic. And I'm so glad that M U D put that in there. But we talk about how families are the most important thing, and that is so true. But yet, the actions of this board don't reflect that. The fact that I haven't seen a single family, mom, dad, child, who has come to this board meeting and said, "My child was in the Douglas County Youth Center. This was our experience. This is our opinion. This is what should be done. This is what shouldn't be done." It hasn't happened. Part of that is because you hold these meetings at nine AM on a Tuesday, when ninety percent of people are at work and can't make it. But we need to look at what is best for kids, what's best for their families. And how can we do that if we don't get input from them? How come we haven't gone to them and invited them here and made it convenient for them to come here to give that opinion? I was with Kathleen on that tour of the youth center. And I'd like to thank Mr. Alexander and Mr. LaFlore for letting us come in and letting us see the operations that are going on there and letting us take a good, close look at what is going to be changed for the next hundred years. And Mr. Alexander is doing great things in the youth center. No one denies that. I think that we need to take a look at these programs that we've been talking about, that these programs are going to drop the number. These programs are going to do this. These programs are going to do that. Great. Let's do the programs now. Let's implement those programs. Let's wait a year and make sure they work. Let's make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to. And then let's visit building a building. Because from what I can see, the youth center, yeah, it could use, you know, some new tile and some new paint and, you know, maybe replace the plexiglass that's scratched up. But it works for now. So, let's put the programs into place. Let's fix the problems and then focus on the building. That's what makes the most sense. Whether you put it on the M U D lot, whether you put it on the dot com lot, that's fine. But make sure it's truly what is needed and what's best for Douglas County. We have an existing building. The one thing that I'm curious about is, in Minneapolis, did they have a fully functioning youth center that was well under capacity, that had room for growth, that had room for expansion before they built their new facility? Did they have that?
They were shrinking in size. Their numbers were going down.
Okay, so their numbers were going down. Our numbers, as far as I can tell, haven't gone down for the last five to six years.
Then look at the statistics from five or six years ago before you make that statement, please.
I thought we weren't supposed to engage in dialogue back and forth. Good.
Come on, finish.
So, our numbers are dropping, yes, but they've been stagnant for the last couple of years. And now you're telling me that you're going to drop them by almost half, but there's nothing to prove that that's going to happen. What's, what's there to prove that?
So, Tyler, let me tell you, I've heard this twice. This, you know what's there to prove it? L B eleven twelve, which goes into L B six seventy, that says, "Kids can no longer be detained next year because of harm to self or because they can't find a placement." If you look at the numbers and things that have been said here today, and this has been said by people that are in there, probably a third, which is probably somewhere between twenty and twenty-five kids, have done a heinous offense. All the other ones are sitting there waiting for placement and some other things. So, the law says next year at this time, they're not going to be able to be there. So, we have to be able to walk and chew gum at the same time. And that doesn't mean we can't do a building and do the programs. If the building is to happen, it'll be three years. We'll have time. So, to your, answer to your question, the law says next year, probably a, a good amount of kids in there will not be able to detain. They have to find a service. So, you had thirty seconds before I committed, so I'm going to let you finish, because I interrupted you.
So, you said the law states that it'll probably go down. Do a, do a study.
No, 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 no. Listen, I didn't say the law says anything. I told you what the law says will happen next year. And if you use logical thought, then you know what's there. So, I'm going to let you finish your closing statement and, and deal from there.
Okay. Do a study.
I'm going to give you about thirty seconds to do that.
Can I finish now?
Yes.
Okay. Do a study. This isn't going to take place in three years. Do a study that's going to show me that the number's going to drop from seventy kids to this many kids. Show me factual, proven statistics that show the exact number that that law is going to drop those kids down to. Because you don't have it.
All right, thank you.
You don't have it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler. Who's next? Anyone next? Oh, you want to, Pete?
Hi, my name's Paul Bellinger. I'm at one oh two one five West Center Road. I wonder if my commissioner would yield to a question. Is James T. Gleason going to be running this? Is he going to be over that? I thought I heard that at one point in time. Somebody state that. Somebody state that. The juvenile justice system when it's completed. Or is he? You're not aware of that? The justice that was up in nine oh three that is running the system now, he departed from this building, is that correct, Commissioner? He said that that wasn't what he wanted. He didn't see that as being the system that was inclusive in his plans.
Yeah, I think you might be referring to the Judge McDermott, is that correct?
In, in nine oh three, up there, you had him.
Right, right. He's a retired, uh, district court judge who, who had juvenile court authority in his jurisdiction as well. Yes, and he, he, his opinion was it would be better at Forty Second Street than in a, in a.
Correct. That's what I thought I heard as well. So, do we do a disservice then, Commissioner, to our, to our community when we don't, when, when, when we have people that dangle the carrot out in front with the money to put the five oh one C three name on the building versus having the people that are going to run the system like James T. Gleason or whatever judge we, we have there? Do we do a disservice in the long run to our community when we don't allow those people the upward mobility of doing great things in our community? Fashioning these programs, fashioning these buildings to our community? Do we do a disservice to our community? I mean, I was, I, I was just shocked that we kind of went on after that in that meeting. I mean, we got an answer from him that this wasn't the building that we wanted and that this didn't really kind of fit the scheme of our children and what we wanted. That, in the long run, doesn't it make more sense for us to put the judge's name that's running the building on the side of the building rather than have it called the Hy-Vee Juvenile Justice County System? Or, or whatever we're going to put on? I'm, I'm not saying it, it, it's going to be that. And I mean no disrespect to Claire or, or to you or, or any of you. I, I'm asking because I was one of those kids that was off the rails. I was one of those ki- kids that had many, many programs placed on me, you know? But, I gave Marianne Borgerson a picture and, and, you know, I was able to, I was able to, I was able to crawl underneath that fence and that picture right there, you know? That's my mom, the amazing aviatress that she was. You know, she put me through some programs that nobody wants to see, that programs that you guys haven't even calculated yet. But, Ma- Commissioner Boyle, do we do a disservice? I mean, back in the old days when we used to, we used to build buildings and we used to put people's names on the side that meant something. Isn't that really, we, we speak for our community going forward. We, we place the name on the side of the building so these people will do great things and save our community a whole bunch of money. That's upward mobility. I mean, in your firm, you like to see upward mobility. You, you reward those people. My judge is the same way. When he's elected to office, he writes a lot of stuff. But his upward mobility really is, when he does a great job and he stands before our community and our community says, wow, this guy really needs to, he, he needs a place in history. And I wonder if we cer- are circumventing that process with the dangling carrot of the five oh one C three prior and paying twice as much for it, Commissioner? Like your study shows. Am I off the rails here still or do I need another program? Do I need a program?
I think you bring up a couple of good points and let me just, uh, point, point out a couple of things. You're right about the, you know, the judge's opinion relative to, we could do better on Forty Second Street refurbishing the youth center than we could building a, a cell block downtown for all the reasons that the Chin Report and other best practices show. The, uh, idea that we're kind of rushing through something that, you know, we're really hurrying towards failure here is one that keeps coming up again and again and again. There's no rush. We need to do this right, not quickly.
Right.
And most recently, the Douglas County Juvenile Services Comprehensive Community Plan for July one, twenty eighteen, July thirtieth, twenty twenty-one makes no mention of this facility. That's the comprehensive strategic plan of Douglas County that our esteemed chairman oversaw. Not a mention, not a mention. So, why don't we have that discussion about these things? We've held, held these hearings and you obviously have attended some that dealt with stakeholder after stakeholder from the legal profession, the county attorney, public defender, to the judiciary, to the service providers, to the involved parents. And they, they, they have been at, at these meetings and, and involved youth about what is, what is in your idea the best solution? Those things need to be ongoing and incorporated into a real strategic plan for what we do. Finally, we've already acquired property at great expense to the taxpayers of Douglas County. What's going to happen to that property? There's no space study on what happens to the OHA building that we bought for two point seven five million dollars. What happens to the IT building? There's no space study that has been completed by the Building Commission to address any of those things. And finally, we have before us a resolution to spend six million dollars, no mention of where that's going to come from. Next week, no public hearings beyond what you're having here today for a property that there is no appraisal on. I don't know too many people who go ahead, myself included, buying commercial property without appraising the whole thing. As a matter of fact, we did appraise the non-headquarters portion of this when the county made an unsuccessful bid on this property earlier this year. It specifically says it's the land only, not the buildings, on the land. And so, you know, we don't even have a good idea of what this thing would be appraised for because we're in a rush to do the bidding of this private corporation that you referred to. There was a meeting yesterday, supposedly a public meeting. Of course, they're not subject to public records or public meeting laws, so they didn't do a couple of things. They had three big no-bid contracts totaling fifteen million dollars or so. But those contracts were not available until the day of the meeting. Because they don't have to make them available. And so, now they're going to have a, a week layover so that anybody who wants to delve through hundreds of pages of contract language, spend fifteen million dollars worth of our money to a private corporation, can take time out of their day and do that. And then they'll rubber stamp them next week. People on this board and people on our staff serve as officers of that, uh, private corporation. People that volunteered to do it and people that were drafted to do it serve both as Douglas County employees and commissioners and as officers and members of a private corporation that's going to do business to the tune of fifteen million dollars for itself on no-bid contracts. All of that has yet to be discussed in public. It might take a little time, but we have all the time in the world to do this. We need to do this right, not quick. And you raise some great points. Finally, I've met with some of the prospective private donors and they are reluctant, would be a charitable word, to put their name on a kid's cell block in downtown Omaha. And I, I think that.
I was being facetious with the Hy-Vee.
You're absolutely right, though.
No, I mean, you had your five minutes, but thank you. But let me, let me state two points before I go to Commissioner Morgan, with three points. Your last statement is absolutely wrong. I know it's wrong about the philanthropic community. And you know it's wrong. And so, the other piece is, you stated the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan is required by the state not to build the buildings for programs. And you talk out of both sides of your mouth when you say, we don't have programs. And we're just talking about builders when the plan you just mentioned is done every three years to fund programs. So, I just want to clarify that for the public is that that's, what that's there for in, in some degree. And lastly, I don't speak for the judge that spoke at your meeting. The one meeting I did come to, I heard that judge. That judge did not specify a specific place. That judge definitely did not call it a cell block. And that judge said he advocated for it to be in one place. And that was, that was true. Commissioner Morgan.
Okay. Thank you. A couple of things. Commissioner Kavanaugh, yesterday when those three contracts were presented because they got there late before the committee, we had not seen him. I made the motion that we laid it over. And that's the end of it. We had not read them, so it didn't happen. None of us had it before or saw it or talked about it. So it was laid over, just so you know. That's what was done. The second thing is, you mentioned appraisals. That no one buys commercial property without appraisals. I'll give you some information. In the last sixty days, there's been more than thirty-some million dollars worth of property sold in downtown Omaha and one hundred and forty-fourth. And I'm not talking about the Boys Town property. I'm talking about to the north of the Boys Town property that were purchased in different situations without appraisals. The people look at the market and they make the purchase of those properties. So, when you made the comment that people don't buy any commercial property without appraisals, that's not true. They buy them all the time without appraisals. They might go to the bank and the bank may get an appraisal once they go to get financing. However, those two properties were bought, or three properties, without appraisals and, and they did not ever get appraisals even from the bank. Also Tyler mentioned, uh, you know, about meeting at night. When I came here, Commissioner Borgerson will remember this and others, that I asked and requested that we have night meetings. And we did. And I wanted those because I thought it would help to get more people to attend our meetings. And luckily, uh, the commissioners felt sorry for me and decided to let me try it. Commissioner Duda knows it too. I think that was a first. The attendance was really somewhat disastrous of those meetings. Commissioner Boyle was there. So, we did try that for a while to see if that would do it on a monthly basis and help us. The other thing that was mentioned is that we haven't been transparent. I believe, and I'm going to yield to the chairman, who does a great, difficult job. If someone comes to the microphone while we're discussing an item on the agenda, they can ask a specific commissioner a question if they want. It might accurate on that. And I know that Tyler said this morning that, uh, he's been coming here six months and I respect that. So we have been trying to have discussions. And we can put things on the agenda, as you've done today, to discuss this. And I think all of us are in agreement, because I think I've read it correctly and I stand to be corrected by one of the commissioners, that we need to build the largest portion of this without question downtown with the courts, with the county attorney, and so on. So no matter what, there's that need. And that need has to be pretty much adjacent to this courthouse and this facility. And, you know, I'm appreciative that MUD is considering working with us. That was our first option that we talked about for some time. It's come back around and I think it makes good sense to do it. I also want to correct one other thing. We put in, we, this board, and I would not support it if they were going to take down that tremendous building that they have on the corner. And I put in that covenants, all of us did, that we wanted to preserve that building for fifty years. And Teresa Urick, who does a outstanding job of keeping us in line, she has that language in there. So it wasn't put in by MUD, but I know they're appreciative of that and wanted that also. But we put that language in. So, we're trying to do the right thing and, uh, we'll continue, I know, to have more discussions. So, that's all I have to say about it. One, last thing, I'm sorry. We have had parents come before this board in the last six months. And also some people that have been held in detention have come before this board and spoke about it. So it is, when the statement was made that none of the parents have come down here, that we've had that. So I think there is some misinformation that comes up.
Commissioner Duda.
Let me go on hold for a minute, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Craft.
Yes, we apparently have strayed from the question. The question is, do we want to make a bid to the MUD, um, board for the purchase of the property? We know we need the property for a courthouse. The rest of this is a different discussion. So they have talked to us about buying the whole property. We originally were going to try to buy three-quarters of the property. We have, in the agreement, we're going to, if it goes as I expect it to, agreements that the building will be preserved for at least fifty years, except for an act of God. Somebody brought up the, the issue of, uh, receiving documents the day of the meeting that are hundreds of pages long. We receive documents here on the day of the meeting, many times. Right here. And we don't have time to read it and it's time sensitive. So that abides by the open meeting law because we can discuss it. So, yeah, I, I'm tired of people spreading misinformation and disinformation that gets printed or televised. There is so much misinformation that is being spread at this time. I'm not going to call it fake news. It's misinformation. Only for discussion.
Uh, Commissioner Duda, are you, are you done?
Well, there, I could talk for over forty-five minutes with the notes I took. I'm not, I'm not going to, off the subject, like some of the public and some of the commissioners have. But I'm not going to.
If I may follow, thank you for the, the segue because you're exactly right. We are going off topic here. We're focused on, are we going to build a new juvenile detention center downtown? Doesn't matter. Does not matter to this discussion. I hear seven commissioners saying we need to expand the courthouse. I think we all are in agreement with that. The question becomes then, do you include the juvenile detention center or not with it? Let me set that question aside for another day. Because regardless, we should be making the offer on this MUD property. We only have two spots to pick from if we're going to expand the courthouse. It has to be next to the courthouse for, for security and efficiency sake. There's only two blocks to pick from. If indeed we are dead set against eminent domain and using it for Mr. Perrin's building, then I don't see how you cannot support putting in a bid for the MUD property. But I maintain that we want the whole block, whichever block we go with or as much of it as we can get, recognizing they each have an historic building that, that we would have to work around. But what, even without the juvenile detention center? I mean, Commissioner Kavanaugh has called for somewhere between a four and twelve-story courthouse annex. But everybody's calling for a courthouse annex. We all recognize that need. Why don't we focus on that and say, which is the better block? That's, to me, that's what this whole conversation should be about. And yes, we, the dot com building, we've owned for a long time and will continue owning it for a long time. The OHA building, yes, we bought. I am now starting to recognize that there is value to owning some of the property around your courthouse. Because if somebody else puts up a building first, they're going to say, oh, no, 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 no. You can't go there. The courthouse was here first. We were here since before Nebraska was a state. This is the third courthouse on this site. And, and I really kind of resent people saying, not my backyard. Don't put a courthouse here. Courthouse is here. It's going to stay here. We're going to add on to it. We need to add on to it next door. This is the better site of the two we have to pick from. That should be the focus of the discussion. Thank you. Commissioner Boyle. Boyle.
Well, engrave this on the wall. I agree completely with Commissioner Duda. We do need to focus, the thing that we agree on, and, and some time ago when I got appointed finally to the Douglas County Building Commission and pushed for it for years, and Commissioner Borgerson was chair, I said, let's, we've got to do something about the courthouse. And this all got started and somehow. And this all got started, and somehow the juvenile center got attached. We need to agree, I think we all do, I know we do, that we have to do something with the courthouse, the judges, the courtrooms, the whole thing, because the public defender and county attorney and all of that. We need to do this, and the ideal site that was originally suggested was the M U D site, and it was going along pretty well. The problem in all of this has been, even with some of the sellers, I mean, you know, the Federal Reserve, we went up there, the building commission went to the Federal Reserve and said, we'd like to rent some space, that's wonderful and everything else, then everything's going along fine, and suddenly someone says, who's coming? You know, the assessor? No, juvenile court. Maybe this lease won't work. So we couldn't go. It was a classic, not in my backyard. And that's been a theme undercurrent in almost everything that I've observed, and I'm not accusing anybody of anything, but that's kind of what I hear. Let's decide on something that really doesn't have any opposition, and that is the courthouse, as you said, Commissioner Duda. I think we ought to decide on the perfect site, which is M U D. And then if, I am opposed to adding a juvenile justice center to it. I really agree with the neighbors. I had a conversion, kind of like St. Paul, had a conversion on the road at the Flatiron, beautiful Flatiron restaurant, and listened to the taxpayers. And I've changed my position back to really where I was a long time ago, along with Krista Borg- Borgerson, but she hasn't switched back yet, we'll work on her. But I think we ought to agree on building the courthouse and then get on with this discussion about the juvenile justice center. I think you're absolutely right. So that's where I am. So thank you.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thanks. Well, I think that we do have a big ground-for-agreement on the courthouse expansion. I think that, you know, there's probably unanimous agreement on that. Where we fall apart is on the removal of the Douglas County Youth Center from the campus that we own at Forty-Second Street, and the creation of a cell block downtown.
Can you stop calling it a cell block?
Stop building a cell block and I'll stop calling it one. But the idea that we have the M U D property on our sites again now, you know, begs a couple questions. And I'm glad that we're having this discussion, because when you go forward on six-million-dollar real estate purchases, you should probably talk about it. And the first question is, how come this site, how come this amount? And we really haven't had that discussion, but the idea that it's adjacent to the courthouse is, you know, something that I have advocated, that we should be interested in the periphery around our campus here. The proposals that have been put forward by the Administrative Services Committee and by others in the public or private sector revolve around different alternatives to what has been proposed by H D R and the private corporation. And the question then becomes, what is this for? Because we buy a city block, we don't have a plan for that block. We've spent millions already on a plan for the footprint on Eighteenth Street from the O H A building that we paid two-point-seven-five million dollars for, the I T building, and then the Perrin building that's subject to our eminent domain, which I oppose. So what is this for? What does it look like? I mean, we have spent lots of time, and many people in the public at their own expense have spent lots of time, putting forward very professionally-done alternatives, and now we have a new proposal, but there's no plan, there's no site plan, there's no drawings, there's no nothing from the architects and engineers that were employed by the private corporation at our expense for what goes up there, whether it's four stories or twelve stories, or what is the M U D headquarters used for. What is the O H A building that we bought and paid for going to be used for? None of this is discussed, none of it's planned out, there is no plan. And that's not a way to go forward on major real estate acquisitions or major construction projects. We don't have an appraisal, and Commissioner Morgan says that's no big thing. Well, Commissioner Morgan's in the real estate business, and I respect his expertise in that, but it doesn't give me a comfort level that somebody else can proceed in the private sector using their private money without an appraisal. He rightfully points out, certainly by the time you get around to talking to the bank about a mortgage, they're going to want an appraisal. And so we should use the same due diligence that at least banks do relative to their money for our public money. And we should have appraisals on acquisitions that we use public dollars for. The O H A building is a good example of what happens when you don't, because we paid too much for that building, by almost everybody's estimation except O H A. And the only people that benefited by that were O H A and the realtors that handled that transaction. The building commission has a space study commissioned, and they have not commenced that space study. At the end of the day, this is going to be building commission campus expansion, and it would make sense to have that space study completed before acquisition and construction of new buildings on that campus took place. We don't know if we abandon the O H A building, what goes in there, nothing's been presented to us on that. We don't know if we have dot-coms stay where they are or go someplace else. We don't even know internally when and where the public defender, the county attorney, the courts, and the probation move or don't move, and what goes into those spaces. None of this has been planned out. We need to slow down, let the space study occur, get an appraisal, see if we're competitive with what the market is, let the process of our committees, like we did on the public safety bond issue, hold hearings of all of the interested parties on all of the levels that I'm talking about, from programs to construction to real estate acquisition to space studies, and then come back with a completed comprehensive plan that actually encompasses everything that we're talking about. We have the time to do it. It doesn't cost us anything more, that's what we're supposed to do as your government. But if we hurry up, putting the cart in front of the horse again, acquiring property before we have a plan for its use again, we'll end up like we just are about to on the O H A property, spending two-point-seven-five million dollars on a property that now we're not going to use. Finally, what about the eminent domain? Do we hereby abandon the eminent domain? I'm all for doing that, and I think that that would be a good thing, but what about the eminent domain? We're talking about spending six million dollars on the next block over to acquire a bunch of property, and yet, what, continuing the eminent domain against the property across the street? So if we're going to do this resolution, I would make a couple amendments. One of them is that it doesn't automatically include property for a cell block downtown, and secondly, that it does include automatically an abandonment of the eminent domain suit that is currently in the courts and at our request, Douglas County's request has been continued now, I don't know if we have a date certain for the continuation. At our request, it's been continued now, and presumably that was done to facilitate this M U D discussion. So this is a case of first impression for all of you out there in viewing land, and all of you public individuals and taxpayers. This hasn't been on our agenda before, but it's set to be approved in one week's time. That's the contempt that the process shows for planning, strategic planning, and it answers none of these questions. It's not necessarily a bad thing that we acquire the periphery properties for expansion, as Commissioner Boyle pointed out. That's not necessarily a bad thing. It's not a bad thing that we expand for judicial capacity on the juvenile court. That's not a bad thing either. I think we have broad agreement that we need to do those things. But how we do it, and are we doing it in the most efficient, cost-effective, smart way, is really under question here, because again and again, we put back-room deals on the top of the agenda and hurry up for decisions on multimillion-dollar projects and give them to a private corporation that, they did continue the multimillion-dollar contract discussion for a week because they had heard that people were starting to ask questions, but that's a week, and they didn't have to. They're not subject to these statutes. They just do this as a noblesse oblige, we'll do you a favor and continue it for one week, good luck reading through the hundreds of pages of contracts, that their lawyers spent months compiling, but they didn't have it done in time to give them any more than twenty-four hours' notice yesterday. So for all of these reasons, I think that we should slow down. We've got plenty of time to make this offer in the new year, after we've answered some of these questions. And the only reason to make it quick is to satisfy the interests of this real estate deal, which will then satisfy the interests of this construction deal, which is being run by a private corporation.
Commissioner Craft.
And I just want to point out that the World Herald wrote a wonderful editorial yesterday. And it explains a lot of the things, and it portrays it in a totally different manner than has been portrayed by some people here. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle.
You know, I'd like to move and discuss the resolution that's before us, and Commissioner Duda did help frame it, and did frame it, and I think the others have said the same thing. What I would like to propose is that on this resolution, we change the second whereas, if you can get that in front of you, where it presently says, whereas Douglas County desires to expand the Douglas County Hall of Justice to relieve space constraints with respect to Douglas County agencies and departments involved in the justice system. That's okay. And then a semicolon and and should be in place, and the language I'd like to see removed, because we don't agree on it.
Well, Mike, I'm actually, this is just for discussion today. It's just for discussion today.
I know it is, but I'm saying, if we could get this done for the, so that we can consider it, I'd like to see that last, the rest of it removed, talking about a juvenile justice center in that building. And then the next thing, I would like to delete the third whereas completely. And then I had a question that I did ask legal counsel about, it's a little, seems to me a little awkward. The very last, be it also resolved, it's got the director of Douglas County Public Properties, Douglas County Chief Administrative Officer, Douglas County Deputy County Administrator, and Douglas County Budget and Finance Director are each authorized to sign the final purchase agreement, so long as the purchase price described above is the same or substantially the same as what is represented in this resolution. I just, I kind of, I don't know, it seems kind of awkward. I think, I thought what we do is have the chair sign these agreements, but if you're available, if not the vice chair, I mean, I just wonder, this seems kind of strange, but maybe it's not, maybe I've missed it in the past. But that's what I'd like to suggest, that when we do the resolution, because we agree on, we can all, you know, we can come back, and there is a majority that probably supports that, but we need discussion. I heard a few people saying things today that were, sounds like they really may be open to where this is located, and I think we need to discuss it further. So that's what I'd propose, I'd like to see that done. Would someone prepare that? I guess, Patrick, maybe you're the person?
Let me say, let me say, Mike. If you want, no, I say if you want to make that amendment next week, that's fine.
I would, but I just want to have it prepared.
Okay, but, no, I'm going to tell you, I think the board's already spoken on that.
Well, that's your opinion.
No, that's not my opinion, that's two, three votes. The vote, the board's vote is five, two, to do that. No, let me finish, let me finish, no, no, no.
Patrick, I want you to prepare the resolution.
Mike, you're out of order.
No, I'm not.
Yes, you are out of order.
Listen, you are not the king of kings.
So I'm asking you to, I listen to you, I'm asking you to listen to me.
You are not the king of kings.
I am not, but I am in, but I am facilitating the process, so please, I let you finish, let me finish. I'm answering your question.
You didn't let me finish.
I did.
No, you didn't.
I'm going to, I'm going to state what I'm going to, no, I am not.
You didn't let me finish.
You go through this every time, and I'm respectful to you, yes, you do.
No, I don't, listen, hey, listen.
Well, let me, let me finish.
Let me finish, I did.
No, I did, you did, I'm not finished, I'll give it back to you after I'm finished.
Gee whiz. This is ridiculous.
If you want to make your amendment next week, you're free to do it.
I just told him to write it.
No, but I'm telling you, the board has spoken to this three, four, or five times.
Yes, this is nuts.
Five, two. So if you want to make your amendment next week, that's fine, but the board has spoken its will on co-location.
I don't think you've heard what Commissioner Duda said today and others.
I heard what Commissioner Duda said.
Just back off and let the board operate. You are not the king of kings.
Is there anyone else in the public that wants to speak?
But you're still my friend.
That's good to know.
Good morning. I'm Norma Leclair from Bellevue, Nebraska. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to all of you. Thank you for the jobs that you do, week in and week out. You couldn't pay me enough to do it. This is the first time that I have ever become so involved in a public issue, and I thank all of you for the education, good and bad. My original involvement began five months ago to save Bob Perrin's historic building from being demolished by eminent domain, so it worked for five months anyway. I'm still involved in that. Now I'm involved with speaking on behalf of the Juvenile Detention Center and the young people there, and all of those involved in the programs there with them. I toured the juvenile detention center last week, and I'm here to tell you that the current facility is clean and bright, and everyone there is doing a terrific job. We should be very proud of the jobs that they do. I can't remember reading or hearing about their national award in 2016. They could easily use some updates. However, they have plenty of space for those updates. They can enlarge their crowded facility and their library specifically. It could be about four times the size it is now. It's doing good things, and they found that the children coming there, a lot of times, they get into problems because they can't even read, and they're very frustrated, and their homes are disaster many times. I'm speaking off my paper now. They could use a lot more computer space. They only have access to these two computer rooms for two hours a week, and in this day and age, even this old lady is on the computer more than four hours a week. The mental health counseling area needs to be tripled in size. Their family visitation area is used for graduation also. It's probably the most pleasant place in there, but it could be more pleasant and more encouraging for the parents when they do come to visit. But the big thing is, the current location has plenty of room for all of these improvements. With the hundred-and-forty-four beds that are not in use, they have the room for the seventy beds that they have used for the past six years, plus they have that overflow available as our city grows. And I've gone to several town hall meetings, and it doesn't sound like Omaha's getting smaller. So we're going to be faced with more young people probably in trouble. So, believe me, when you address some of these issues, you will have other cities coming to see our facility on Forty-Second Street. The programs in place now are very impressive, and the big plus is space. These other cities are restricted because of space limitation. Thank you. And please still think about the civic auditorium for the judges. Maybe you could do a tunnel under the city, and it could be heated, and they could get on a segue and be there in a hurry. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? On this item?
Jim Thompson, Ten One South Thirty-Fifth Avenue.
On this item?
On this item.
Oh, okay.
I've been sitting there patiently, I want to get over it quick to get the other items. But I have to say something. Buy the building, M U D wants to sell it, willing buyer, willing seller, work out the money, I trust P J Morgan. The space, if you've got excess space, get deeds back here, get the treasurer back here. So as a consumer of the services, the county services, I want to come here, midtown growing, downtown growing population, it's a nice problem to have, the excess space. Release Bob Perrin from eminent domain, you satisfy a lot of people, let them and Jim Rosie build that neighborhood, which I would, I'd be watching them because it's a nice spot to do. So real quickly, move on this particular, I'm not going to talk about juvenile justice. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the nice compliment, I appreciate that.
Anyone else?
I'm Nicole Leclair. I live in Bellevue, Nebraska, and I too have been coming to these meetings since five months ago. And I've learned more than I ever wanted to learn coming. And I'd really like not to come because I've got a lot of other things I need to do in my life, but I also feel like this is so important. And I could nitpick over what you said, what you said, what you said, but I don't think that's gonna help the situation right now. And in the spirit of the holiday season, you know, I really hope that we can just look at what we agree on, you know, and that we all are humans and we all have feelings and needs. And the kids have needs and I too went to the MUD meeting and I always love going to other meetings because they listen. And I will say today, I, and at other meetings here, I've observed you all talking amongst each other when citizens are up here talking. I appreciate you're not doing it now, but being rather distracted and, and when other commissioners are talking that you may not agree with. And I, I just think it would be lovely if we could just have some civility in this whole process. And I know we're not gonna all agree on everything, but if we can look to what we do agree on, and I think all of my friends here, we do agree that the courthouse needs to be expanded. It's just a matter of where. And I think we all agree that we care about children. And it's not just the future of Omaha through buildings that's important and our history, but it's really, I also started the tour, I didn't quite complete it, at the Juvenile Justice Center last week as well, but I was able to sit and listen for about an hour to Brad and Mr. LaFleur. So, yeah, I just think if we can just come together and look at what we have in common and see how we can, how we can make this work with respect to the kids. So, I lost track of my thoughts. Thank you so much. I'd love to not see you regularly. I'm sure you'd love to see us not regularly. I will also say what was a treat last week at the MUD meeting, as they came up to us afterwards and they thanked us personally, put hands on our back, which didn't bother me. They put hands on our back and said, "Thank you so much for coming. We really appreciate your ideas and your thinking." And that's really what, you know, your public is asking of you all, that your public voted you in, we want you to just listen to us. Thank you so much. I had your eye contact, that was great. Thanks.
Anyone else? With that, Commissioner Boer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know I have sat quietly today because, again, there's a lot that could be said and stuff that has been said, that has been said, that I could react to. But I want to reiterate, my three goals of this whole project have to do with what's best for our kids and our families. My three goals for rightsizing our youth center and providing what we need for our youth and our families deals with prevention, intervention, and aftercare. I also have a vision that if we do this right and we are able to keep our children and our families intact and out of the system, we can intervene quickly with they are in the system and get them out to the services and programs that they need. Or, and once they get out, that we have the programs and services in place to keep them from coming back into the system. We too could have a treatment facility, which is totally different than what has been stated here today, like Minneapolis has at our current location. We can look, as Commissioner Boyle said, at what is needed in the mental health arena for our treatments, the treatments that our kids and our families need in that, with those issues. So, I, I think it's, again, we can disagree and we can disagree respectfully, and I appreciate your civility comment, because I always enjoy, and I can't remember the constituent's name there that just spoke, but I always enjoy listening to you because you always speak with a smile. And so, thank you. Because, again, we can disagree, but we can disagree respectfully. We can be civil to one another and still moves forward. But this throwing out derogatory terms, misinformation, twisting facts, has got to stop so that even if you are on the other side, you know exactly what we're talking about. And so, I don't mind you coming to our board. I don't mind hearing from you. But what I do want to start hearing is solutions to the programs and services that are needed. I have attended meetings with parents. Parents not only have been here, but I have attended meetings and continue to attend those, that parents, for, with parents who want to talk about what programs and services are needed. And so, again, you can be a naysayer, that's fine, but do it respectfully. If you want to try to be a part of the solution, then provide me some input on that so that I can look at those services and programs that could, again, prevent kids and families from coming into our system, intervening in a timely manner to get them out of our system quickly. And then, once they're out, make sure that they don't come back and that we are providing them what they need. Thank you.
Commissioner Boer.
Well, Commissioner Boer, so you hit the nail on the head as well today, just, just now. And I, I would make a suggestion respectfully, that one of the ways that we can do away with some of the misconceptions and some of the exaggerations or whatever is taking place, because there are some and comments being made, is that we, we should hold probably at least six, maybe 10 town halls around the county and go out in the evening and UNO and other places and, and I'll get a full tank of gas and come out into your district and we'll stop and eat on the way. And, anyway, hold these meetings out, and I think we need to do that. And I'd like to see us commit to that. I think it would stop some of these, the comments. And many of us have met, we are exactly right, talking with the people who have been incarcerated. There was a woman here last week, surprised to find out who her family is, they're a very active family in the community. And, but she talked about her, her son. I think there's a lot to learn from them and I really do. So, a series of town hall meetings that we're comfortable with and talking about these options and what they are, I think would be very helpful and I hope that can happen. And the other thing I'd like to do, when I was on that committee that we met with the group, when the 501(c)(3) came up, I said it needs to be public. We need to, it needs to have a public record, it needs to follow. It's my opinion that whenever we have anything associated with the county board, that they have to comply with the open meetings law and the public records law, that they don't have the option of saying, "We're not doing that." And so, the documents have to be available and so forth. And yesterday, we discussed this about having, moving the, this nonprofit board meeting to this forum on a Tuesday morning and having them be here first because they, as someone pointed out, they're expensive lawyers who were paying by the hour to talk. So, anyway, have them come in when they want to have their meeting right here, which will be on Cox Communication with us. We can sit in the audience and listen to it and the public can be here as well, and then we go into a county board meeting. I'd really like to see us do that. I think we have to. Because as we talked about yesterday, while we, some of us think that we have been completely transparent, and I know that we've worked at it, but the perception is, we're not. And perception rules. So, I think we need to try to accommodate and, and step up to the plate and say, "Yeah, that happened. Here's how we remedy it." Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, before we move to the next item, let me note, we've had discussion on this today and our plans, my, the plans ought to have limited discussion next week, limited, because we discussed it today. And I just want that to be known to the public. Sure, we'll take a five-minute recess and reconvene. You all are gonna be up next when we come back, so. Brad, you all are gonna be up next when we come.
Yeah, I'm glad you said it, because I didn't know who it was.
I just wanted to be sure that you guys knew.[1181.08]
Okay, if you're all ready, we're gonna pull it back together. Please.
It looks like we're not gonna make this lunch in, but...
We're gonna proceed to the Child and Youth Services Committee. Item one is just a note of the minutes for the record. And item one is the Douglas County Youth Center report from the Superintendent Brad Alexander.
Good morning, Commissioners Brad Alexander, the Superintendent of the Douglas County Youth Center. So I've handed out the presentation, you should have it in front of you. It'll also be up on the screen, but we won't hit all of the slides on the presentation. So if we could start, please, it's at page number three. And I'll present this information, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Greg Hepburn. He's got some information regarding expediting that he's gonna share with you as well. So 2018, so far in 2018, we've had eight students graduate, earn their diploma while they were at the Youth Center. Page number four, September 28th. Twenty-eight students had their parents show up for their parent-teacher's conference, which was fantastic. We're gonna have it, we're gonna do that again in January of 2019. Onto the next page.
Brad, when you say twenty-eight students, how many could have been there?
Well, they want to wait till the kids have been there thirty days, so they have some information to provide to the parents. So I think out of the kids that were eligible, we caught most of them, I'll bet.
That's great.
Yeah.
Really positive, that makes a difference.
No, it's huge. Page number five, we had a career fair on September 21st. We had fourteen groups show up for that, and we're obviously appreciative of their time and the opportunity that they took to come spend some time with the kids and show them some opportunities that they may not have otherwise considered. The next one will be March of 2019. If we could move on to slide number nine, please. So this is our average daily population, and this is, you know, their estimated numbers. The average daily population, the average length of stay are actual numbers. The admissions are estimates based on, well, at this point, we've, it includes eleven of the twelve months that are in our calendar year. So I don't think you're gonna see that nine-ten move a whole lot when I give my next report. But the average daily population through the end of November is seventy-nine. The average length of stay is fifty. And if we could move to slide number, or excuse me, page number eleven. And this is how our average length of stay is tracking. Mark and Wayne and some others have done a lot of work, because we're wanting to pull those numbers together to include the kids that are here less than twenty-four hours. What we do know right now, and we haven't been able to put them together, we're gonna get there, but the kids that have been there less than twenty-four hours, when we just isolate those and look at those, their average length of stay is somewhere in the neighborhood of four hours. So I'm assuming when we bring that in, and it's about, on any given month, there was about eighteen, eighteen to twenty, that were in that less than twenty-four hour period. So clearly, that's gonna bring our length of stay down when we combine those two. So it's an overall view. If we could move to slide number, excuse me, page number thirteen.
If you wanna, I got a line of people before you.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So I got you down.
I'll wait, I'll wait, thank you.
Okay. So you can see that the adjudicated and pre-adjudicated, those would be the juvenile. Those would be the kids that are in the juvenile court. The pre-trial and the sentence, those are the kids that are in adult court. So clearly, the pre-trial and the pre-adjudicated, the kids that are waiting to get to court, that's fifty-seven percent of our population combined between the adult and juvenile systems. If we could move to slide number eighteen, please. Court jurisdiction at admissions. Eighty-four percent of our kids, when they show up at our door, are in juvenile court. Fourteen percent are in adult court. And again, we can see that switch, where it kinda swung back in between 2014 and 2015. You see the significant drop from the county court kids, two forty-one down to eighty-three. But then it's kinda picked up on the juvenile side, it increases from seven fifty-five to eight forty-five. The interesting thing, I think, is just what's happened to that, the adult court or the county court population since that switch. And it was a statutory switch that pushed the class-three and four felonies, made sure that they started in juvenile court. So clearly, you would've expected the adult system to, or the adult court kids to drop at that moment in time, but it's risen quite a bit since that time, eighty-three in 2015 to one twenty-three in 2018. Slide number twenty, excuse me, page number twenty, please. So these are the reasons that the kids are showing up at our door. Fifty percent of them show up with a new charge or a new offense. The combination of violation of probation, KPS unlawful absences equals thirty-nine percent. Those are the kids that would be under the jurisdiction of probation, and then the juvenile court holds. Failure to appear in county court and juvenile court. And the next page, twenty-one, and I, that slide is getting to be really, really busy. But I think I need to kinda reel that back a little bit. But you get to those points when you're looking at these statistics, it's hard to stop, because all of these offenses, when you get to a certain level, have the same number of occurrences, and so how do you shut that off? So we'll work on that. But there are seventeen offenses that account for ninety-one percent of our kids. Robbery, gun charges, assaults, and terrorist threat threats. Those account for about fifty percent of our kids that are showing up with new offenses. The next slide or page has admissions by race. Sometimes these raw numbers, I don't know how much they mean, but when you look in terms of percentages, which factors in the number of admissions and it kind of accounts for the hills and valleys in our admission numbers. The African-American youth represent fifty percent of our admissions. Caucasian, twenty-four percent. Hispanic slash Mexican, twenty-two percent. Native American, three percent. And Asian, two percent. That's how that breaks out in 2018. Move to slide number twenty-four, please. The home program, and we're going to be meeting next Monday to, I think, the conversations about, are we doing as much as we can, is there more that we could do to get kids involved in the home program? Again, the red bar is an estimate in terms of number of admissions, based on what we've seen from January through November of 2018. So we're forecasting roughly one hundred and seventy-one admissions. And sixty-six of those, we anticipate to be successful completions. And our average daily population this year has been twenty-two. Slide number, page number twenty-six, please.
Successful?
Yes.
So out of one hundred and seventy-one?
That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to get that through my chocolate head.
Okay. Page number twenty-six, academic credits earned. You heard me say, I think I opened with eight kids that have received their high school diplomas, earned the credits for them while they're at the Youth Center. And we've had years where we've had more than that. But I think this is the one that really sticks out to me, because we're showing that our education department will award more credits this year than they have in the last, full credits this year than we have in the last ten years. And that's a credit to the people that are working with the kids, and certainly the kids themselves. That's a significant achievement.
That's great.
Page number twenty-eight, please. Individual education plans. Again, we're estimating that we'll see one hundred and fifty-three kids by the end of, well, now this month, by the end of this month. One hundred and fifty-three kids will show up with individual education plans. And of that one hundred and fifty-three, we would've saw one hundred and two of them previously. So one hundred and two of those would've been kids that are coming back, are repeating. And that represents sixty-seven percent of those kids that are on individual education plans. And page thirty-two, please. So you can see the mental health crisis intervention numbers are about as high as we've seen in the last ten years, twenty-fourteen being the exception. So two thousand three hundred and eight crisis intervention sessions, eight hundred and forty-nine times that a pediatrician or practitioner has spent time with a young person while they're at the Youth Center. And on slide page number thirty-four, you can see the medication that the kids are taking here, while they're at the Youth Center. More often than not, they're showing up at our door with these sort of diagnoses. And occasionally, there's times when they are diagnosed while they're with us. But psychotropics generally, almost every month continues to kinda lead the way for us. The next slide is sexually transmitted diseases. We have completed five hundred and forty-one tests so far this year. And sixty-two of those five hundred and forty-one were positive tests. And so we had an opportunity to help those kids with those issues while at the Youth Center, at least initiate that process, if not see it completely through. And we'll move to slide thirty-seven. That is my presentation, so I'd be happy to take any questions. And then Greg's going to take a few minutes of your time as well.
Commissioners Craft, Kavanaugh, and Boy.
Yes. First of all, I want to let the public know that these documents are available on our website. On the agenda, there's a link. This is always a very interesting study. It's worth seeing every slide and studying every slide. And when you have questions about what does that mean, give us a call. Okay. You said the average length of stay by record-keeping is gonna go down by changing what you're doing, correct?
The direction I've been given to move forward is to continue to track that statistic the way that we have since about 2014, 2015. That way, we'll continue to have a trend line.
Right, but I thought you were gonna track it the way the state, the rest of the centers around the state.
I think what we're, not what I think, what we're learning is that when we look at other jurisdictions, they're not necessarily calculating that statistic the same way we are. And so if we include those kids that are here even within that first twenty-four hours, we'll have a better chance of kinda comparing apples to apples.
Yeah, and when are you gonna start that?
We're trying to get there right now. Mark's got the data entered for each of the months this calendar year now, we just have to combine those.
And one of the pages we didn't talk about was dusk to dawn. Or is Mark gonna talk about that when he gets up? Okay, good, I'll wait. You said the home program, and Mike asked a question about, I think it was sixty-two that were successful. What does success mean in that program?
That means they did not, they completed, they did not return to the Youth Center.
Okay, thank you. And in any of our programs, do we teach anger management?
Yes, we have behavior management.
And drug counseling as too. Okay, now what about medication counseling, such as those on specialized medicines that they need to take to control themselves? Do we counsel them on how important that is? And do we give them guidance on how they can access that medication if they cannot afford it after their term is up?
We do both, and my hope is that we're going to do better here going forward. We're, you guys, you guys, excuse me, you will recall a presentation with Dr. Lou from Charles Drew and Kenny McMorris, or excuse me, Kenny McMorris from Charles Drew and Dr. Lou from UNMC. We've had a couple of meetings since that. We actually have a phone call this afternoon at five to see how this is going. And I think, you know, the medication management piece, I think, is gonna be really, really big. I also think that some opportunities that they may have to move evaluations through quicker are encouraging. And so it's gonna be kind of exciting to see where this goes.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thanks for the report, good job.
Yes, sir.
Just a couple things. On page nine, where you deal with the average daily population, it appears that since about 2013, it's kinda plateaued out in this, you know, seventy-nine, eighty. And I was just wondering, in all of our analysis of statistics, programs, everything, I don't see in any of the reports, particularly this latest Douglas County Juvenile Services Comprehensive Community Plan Report, any analysis on how can we or will we impact that number to bring it down? Are you aware of any analytical, empirical information on how we could impact on that population of eighty that stayed the same for the last five years anyhow, in a downward fashion?
Well, Commissioner Rogers appropriately points towards the legislation in July of 2019. And it's going to limit, you know, intake, we don't control that front door probation intake.
Right.
And so they're going to be somewhat further limited in terms of the kids that can come through. And then, you know, whether or not a kid has a placement doesn't seem to, isn't gonna matter in terms of whether or not they're gonna stay with us, they're gonna have to find somewhere. And so, and thirty-nine percent of our kids are with probation, so...
Right, right. So by impacting on that violation, and these violation actions or court actions are filed by the county attorney, right?
Yes.
The county attorney has a discretion then not to file them, or if we use other means?
Well, early on in the system, it's the county attorney. Once they're on probation, then it's the probation officer that's making that determination, and then they'll have a revocation hearing, and a county attorney will get involved.
Okay. So between the county attorney and the probation office, we can get them perhaps to look at how many kids we put into the system under that category of probation violation? Is that what you're saying?
I don't know how objective it's gonna be. It may be somewhat subjective, so it's going to be, I mean, it's going to be probation's responsibility in both regards.
But that's one of the entry ports for this population. If we can affect a change there, perhaps, different categories of what a violation is, or how we deal with, you know, a kid who's maybe having trouble on probation before we violate him, that would afford us an opportunity maybe to lower the number that are actually showing up at your doorstep under that category. Is that what I'm hearing?
I believe so. You know, and I hope I'm not getting off subject here, but one of the things I walked away from the Minneapolis trip was, you know, we all wanna look at how many kids they've got in their facilities. And sometimes it's equally important to find out why those other kids aren't there. And they only had thirty-nine kids in out-of-home placements. If you only, and I couldn't tell you, ours is hundreds. And if you only have thirty-nine, and you're not, so you're not looking at hundreds, now you're only looking at thirty-nine, clearly, the opportunity to violate is much less.
Yeah.
That's something that I think we should be paying attention to.
Well, and, you know, that goes to another point where the Minneapolis thing, in many ways, may be better than what we've got going here, and we can learn some stuff, but it's so much different that it's difficult to see how we, you know, can turn that key and make it happen quickly. I think, I read someplace, and maybe you correct me if I'm wrong, that the average length of stay in that facility is like seven days.
Yeah, and it wasn't me, it was, I think it was Joyce Suter that was with us. She had a conversation, kind of a side conversation, and explained how we factor or calculate our length of stay. And I can't remember whether we were at Hennethan or Ramsey, I can't remember which one it was. I wanna say it was, was it Ramsey? Was it Hennethan? And the person that she was talking to said, you know, if we factored it that way, our length of stay would probably be very, very similar to yours. So it's important that we...
I see, okay. Well, yeah, I mean, how you count is the key to it. And it's gotta be the same categories in both systems. Okay, so that would be one possible avenue to address this population disparity, which is the probation violation avenue. And you mentioned one other that might help us, was that a placement, a more robust placement?
My understanding is the legislation will, does not allow for, the fact that you can't find a placement is not a reason for them to be detained. So they're really gonna have their hand forced here.
Okay. And we spend considerable resources on placement, on, you know, out-of-home and truly out-of-state placement. I don't know that you're familiar with those figures, but it's a...
I am not.
The state does, we don't.
Yeah. So that's good to know. The other thing I have to ask is, and this bothers me, because we see it all the time, and it doesn't appear to get better. As a matter of fact, I'm looking at it, and it looks like it's worse. This admission by race category on page twenty-two, where good news is, since 2008, when this goes back ten years, our populations come down significantly. Although in 2008, the largest single segment of our population were African-American kids. Bad news is, in 2018, although the population is down significantly, the percent of population that is minority kids has actually gone up.
Yes.
So while we're detaining fewer children, we're detaining proportionally more minority kids. Okay. And, you know, again, you receive what comes in the door. You don't have a selection process at Douglas County Youth Center. But is there any empirical evidence that you're aware of that would allow us to maybe address that point? Because like the average daily population, the average daily population, I mean, the lower is the better. This is so out of whack with the demographics of our community, that it really concerns me that we're basically running a Youth Center to detain minority children way out of proportion to their representation in the population. Do you have any, and if you don't, you know, it's not something that I'm saying that you should know the answer to.
You know, it's one of those things that you just have to chip away at, I think. And I don't believe that it's the juvenile justice or criminal justice systems that are going to have all the answers in this regard. It's a societal issue, for sure. And I recall a long time ago, when we did a better job, the courts did a better job of tracking where kids were coming from, their addresses. That had a huge impact on the Latino population, who tended to be much more transient, and their addresses changed more often. They did a better job of tracking that, and it reduced the failure to appear. And then we took it a step further, and this was like in 2010 or 2011, and intake started to screen those kids who were coming in on failure to appear. And the number of failure to appear kids dropped significantly. And I think that was, yeah, 2010, 2011. And so we went from roughly one hundred and twenty-nine kids to one hundred and four. And that was the reason for that drop back then. So it's those kinda things, and really, Mark's, you know, he's been the DMC co-chair for the last several years, so he's the expert in the room right here. But there's things I think you can get your hands around, I know Mark and I talked about. We always bring up the I- I know Mark and I talked about, we always bring up the IEPs. And we know that the kids of color are overrepresented in that group. And so it seems to me like that might be something that you can actually get your hands around and hope to make some sort of an impact with.
Okay. Well, I mean, we'll continue this discussion, you can expect questions from me in this category on an ongoing basis. I really appreciate your dedication, and these monthly reports are very helpful. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Commissioner Boil.
I agree with you, the reports are very helpful. I have a question about, I think, when we look at Minneapolis, I'm curious if someone who went or someone has a contact with them can find out how their prosecutor handles offenses, what offenses, and, you know, whether they have a very active gang unit like we do and that sort of thing. I think what's happening is we're looking in the wrong place. I think what happens, why these, the people of, well, young people of color are there, is that there is a concentration in their community, we have a very active and successful gang unit. And whether these kids are in gangs or not, I don't know, but there's a focus. And so when you focus on something like that, it kind of reminds me back in the day, I got a call from a Protestant church, and Sunday, there was a police officer who was ticketing every car that was parked, did say no parking, but they parked there anyway on Sunday to go to church. And it was technically, yeah, it was a violation, but it was Sunday, you know, I mean, they were going to church and stuff. Anyway, they all got tickets. There were like twenty-five people who had tickets. So, I mean, when you focus on that, you're going to get a certain bunch of people, and that's what this makes me think. So I'm curious, I think it'd be helpful to know if, when the population is so low in Minneapolis, they're doing something quite differently way back when, in who they're arresting, what kind of offenses they're looking for, whether they have an aggressive prosecutor, whether they have an aggressive unit of police enforcement, that can really make the difference. So I'd be curious, that, those are some of the things we need to talk about with our own people here in Omaha, about, you know, prosecution and so forth. But I appreciate, you really, these reports really stimulate a lot of thought, so thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Sorry.
Commissioner Moore.
A couple of things. I'm going to kind of address what Commissioner Boils said first. You made arrangements for me to talk to Maricopa County.
Yes, sir.
And it's kind of interesting, I did that in the last month or two, and so anyhow, here you have a population, Maricopa County, of over four million, it's around four-two, four-three. They have two facilities. They have one in the western, not too far west from the downtown, but closer to the downtown area on the west side. Then they have one further out in Mesa on the east side of Maricopa County. And I spent a few hours, they run at eighty to a hundred at each facility with a population that's seven times our population at least. And, you know, the facility does have the courts, the detention, and all of that right there, the attorneys come out there, I can't say the attorneys are in the building, but anyway, they're there. But I was amazed it's that low, and they have a tremendous gang problem there in Maricopa County. So it is kind of interesting how those numbers vary from ours and where we are. The other thing we heard in Minneapolis that I was going to ask you, Brad, and I appreciate, I wasn't going to go unless you were going up to Minneapolis because I wanted to hear it with you, and you have so much more knowledge, but they talked about the shelters out in the community at some of our meetings up in Minneapolis, Claire was there. And I'm just curious, do we have the same kind of thing there in the housing? You know, there's just independent shelters around the downtown area and all that.
I do recall them talking about that, and I know that the school for the post-adjudicated youth, that was a county-run facility, the guy that runs that showed up a little late for that meeting, and was sitting next to me, so I got an opportunity to talk to him a little bit. There were some talk of shelters. I don't know whether those, I don't recall whether those were county or if they were privately run operations.
They did tell us they were privately.
I think, yeah.
Claire, you'd be free to correct me, but they did. I asked that, if those were their shelters, because that would change the population. They said, no, they're independent, and they were located all over. And it was kind of interesting, in St. Paul, they're both downtown, the one in Minneapolis is a block, it's been there ten years, I think I'm stating that correctly.
It was the nineties, yeah.
Yeah. And it's within a block or block and a half of the new ball stadium that they built in the last five years, where the Vikings play and so on. And there's also condominiums around it. And then in St. Paul, there's really, it's right downtown also, with nice restaurants and everything, close by that detention facility also, and we saw that. So the other thing I want to say, and I want you to correct, don't worry about offending me ever, and I've told you that before privately, you know, to disagree. The facility out, because I asked them the question about that other facility that's out the twenty miles or whatever, they talked about that being a treatment facility, not the same. And that's where we send our youth out to a treatment center away from Omaha. We don't have that same kind of thing, do we?
They have something similar to our YRTC's, they do. But the school, I think, is, and we would, honestly, we were there for less than eight hours when we visited two facilities, so we didn't get to get in the weeds a whole lot, but the school was for a different group of kids than what their facilities that would have been somewhat similar to our YRTC's, I think, are designed to help with.
And I do think there was some discussion, I don't want to get off on that, but I think there was some discussion this morning about, you know, it's for another day, using our present facility if we choose to come down, to put it all together here, to use that present facility for something that we could really make positive, and hopefully in the mental health area, and maybe some of that treatment. But I don't want to get off on that. But Brad, I do appreciate the work you do there, and I will come out to play ping pong with you now that my spinal column is healed a bit.
Now my back screwed up, so...
I want to be ready for you.
And real quick on Phoenix, just one point, just, they don't, they're not holding kids that are in adult court. And I don't know what that number is there, but their kids that are in adult court are somewhere in their adult system.
Okay.
Just a point of clarification.
Yep. That's the last question, question, Brad, sorry, as Brad's coming, but let me, I'd like to add to a couple of points that were made to some degree. I mean, the talk was mentioned about Minneapolis, and just note, Minneapolis was, is way more progressive. The state has implemented some things, and those things are coming here later. And so some of the things that they are doing are in statute, and some of that thing, and some of those things, what was mentioned in respects to, Commissioner Boil mentioned the attorneys, and most of these places where this stuff is driving and driving hard, it is led by the prosecutor's office. It's led by the county attorneys. They are there. Place we went to in a county of five thousand or so up in South Dakota, maybe smaller, it's led from that office. And so, you know, Don's been on board with this and talking, but I think, you know, we shouldn't make any assumption that everybody in office is on board, and that's going to be a fight that Don has to fight in some respects. And I think the board needs to keep pushing. But the other piece too is, I think with the probation piece, once, you know, they get into that process, it's within the court, and Brad made this, and this is the conversation that is bigger than the building. Brad made the point about something similar to the YRTC's. I mean, they made no bones about it that they, as a judiciary, juvenile judiciary, do not like the YRTC's. So that's an option to some degree that's not there, that, you know, in this bigger discussion of services, that's there to have. You know, I was hoping Mary could come today, but she's out of town, and my hope is to have her come next year to answer these questions, so she can explain some of those steps that they're taking to get to some degree. And my hope is to have her next month, if she's not out and traveling to some degree. So I just want to add that in the mix. Commissioner Boil.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Fred, tell me the difference, because there's about a twenty, almost twenty-some day difference between length of stay for kids that are not probation versus kids that are probation. So what's the difference, and what are we doing about that? It's on page...
Twelve, wasn't it?
Twelve.
So the youth that are not on probation, you're pointing out that, and it looked, I wish I should have an average there for the entire year on the far right, but just looking at the months, it appears that...
Twelve.
That each month, most months are higher than the kids that are on probation, right?
Twelve.
Twelve.
So I, my best guess is the kids that are not on probation are those kids that would be going through the evaluations and some other things that are happening earlier on that we would all like to see shorten up. The kids that are on probation are the kids that have lost their placement, violated, ran from their placements, and unfortunately, once they do that, they seem to be more difficult to place.
But that's not showing here.
What am I missing?
They're showing on page twelve, unless I'm reading it wrong, it's, the first one is juvenile not on probation, and their length of stay in November, just use November because it's there, is fifty-one.
Yep.
Then you go down to probation, and theirs is thirty-five.
Yep.
So maybe I'm reading it wrong, but that tells me they're moving through faster than the kids that aren't on probation.
They should. I mean, honestly, they should move through faster. The kids that are not on probation, they're the ones that you're waiting on the evaluations for. You're waiting on, well, the detention hearing happens right away, within the first twenty-four hours, but then you're waiting on all of those pre-trial hearings that would lead to an adjudication hearing and ultimately a disposition. And within all that process, you have the length of time necessary to complete an evaluation. So those are certainly going to...
But that's what we're using...
Those are the ones that are going to stay longer, the ones that are on probation. Their length of stay, honestly, I think for the most part, is because they ran or acted up at a placement, and now all of a sudden, they're labeled, and it becomes more difficult for them to go back to another placement. Otherwise, their length of stay should not even be thirty-five days.
But even though, so the fifty-one, just, again, you can go across the page, but those non-probation ones are the ones that we're working on with the partnership with UNMC and Creighton and Charles Drew and Hartland and Reach, all that, to get those evaluations and assessments done faster, which would, again, reduce that length of stay, get them through faster, we're intervening to get them through faster. And then the probation ones, I think, again, that, and maybe that's a statute, Commissioner Rogers, that you're referring to, but so violation of probation is that it's just an automatic, you're back in, you violate your probation for whatever reason, you're in the detention center, period.
Well, I mean, my understanding is they have graduated sanctions, and they don't necessarily knee-jerk and put them back at the youth center, but, yeah, we certainly, obviously, we've got forty percent of our kids...
So those are two populations that we can really drill down on to try to get a little bit more data, data on.
Yeah. I mean, I think you can, it depends on who you ask, and I won't say that there's some people that feel some of those kids are there. Some of them are there for, you know, they violated probation, but some feel that it's kind of a, I'm mad at you violate probation because you didn't do what I told you you were doing, and you really didn't justify being in there. That's just, that's my reciprocation of what I've heard. And also, there may be a small amount of them that I, my understanding, that aren't on probation that are federal kids that they send to us that served, they'll serve in time, for lack of better words.
We get to a few federal kids, but it's not very many.
Yeah, I just wanted to make it, it's not clear, pure.
And those are all in adult court.
Yep.
But then that also drills into the whole issue that we've been working on for a number of years, and that's that disproportionate minority contact issue. That's why we hired a coordinator to look at our system points. And again, if you remember when we were, JDAI was up here last week, I think it was, or whatever, last month, we looked at the zip code map, and there's three zip codes with the highest population of kids that are in our youth center, and two of those highest ones come from the North Omaha area. So again, we have the opportunities to really drill down what we're looking at, because if you start to try to address those issues, I think you then are able to address a lot of issues countywide. The home program, tell me again, the overall capacity is fifty. And we were having trouble with getting referrals. And potentially, one of the reasons is, is because of the success rate not being as high as it should be, or what are the reasons why they're unsuccessful? And do, again, these are all discussions that I'm going to be very, very interested in having on what we can do different with the home program? Because to me, that is, the home program is a superb program if we can figure this out to keep kids out of the system, out of the detention center.
Yeah, that success rate dropped when we started taking the kids on diversion. And it's our opinion that they're coming to us kind of eleventh hour. I mean, they have very little wiggle room in terms of the system. They do, we don't have a whole lot of opportunities to try to change their behavior before they pull them off of diversion, and we would like to see them come earlier, and I think that would be helpful.
Well, I can't wait to talk about that, because again, that's an important, important program. And then the IEPs, I know I've mentioned it before and wondered if there was any more conversation or work done on bringing in or assessing, and this would be working with the schools as well, the issue of dyslexia. Because, I mean, the more I read, the more I hear, the more work that's being done on that, a lot of times, there is a misdiagnosis, if you will. They may be, they may have dyslexia, but it's being diagnosed as a behavioral health issue versus getting treated for that. So I think that we need to try to figure out a way to work with Clarice to have her come in, and we start really assessing or have the schools assess, and so we know when they're coming to us that that's what they have. And then lastly, I was, I think I'm going to try to start talking about mental health as mental medical. Your mental health is a part of your whole health, and it shouldn't be separated, and we keep, we continue to treat it as such. It's kind of the, you know, if you have a heart attack, you're not going to be placed on a waiting list, you're going to be treated, and you're going to be looked at, and you're going to be treated. If you have mental issues, you're going to be sitting in a room and waiting until there's available bed, or waiting till a psychiatrist comes to see you, or whatever the case may be. And I think we, again, I think we've done a wonderful job of elevating the conversation about one's mental health being a part of their whole health. But I found it interesting that there's places now that are calling it mental medical rather than mental health, because it's getting addressed quicker than it has been in the past. So I think we continue to still work on that. If we can figure out and try to treat those kids and even their families at an early part of their behavior problems, then it's going to keep them out of our adult system or recidivating back into our youth system numerous times. So look forward to those discussions.
Commissioner Boil.
This has been really interesting remarks. I appreciate what Commissioner Borges just said, especially about mental medical, that's a great concept. I want to ask about, it concerns me, on page fourteen, when you look at the... I want to ask about, it concerns me on page fourteen, when you look at the admissions, and I, please don't take this as any kind of a loaded question or something, but if you look at the total down below, going from January to November, and it peaks in May, where we have ninety that are admitted, this is where, this is where I think, unless we get these programs put together, home and the rest of them, and trying to drive down the minority, you know, there's, there's things causing this, it's the judges and it's, you know, I mean, it's at some point maybe, but it's certainly the prosecution and what, and the offenses are being picked up for and all this other stuff. So, we have ninety kids, ninety people in the facility in May of 2018. If we build the facility downtown with, I don't know, seventy, what are we thinking, sixty spots, what do we do with the other thirty, you know? And I just think we need to do, someone today suggested, maybe it was Tyler, said, you know, we need to, we need to work on these programs first and then build what kind of responds, and I really, not that we can do that, but I don't know that we have the programs in place that are adequate to drive that number down. And I do want to suggest now, is that part of the philanthropic part could be building these homes that, and, you know, we have a lot of people, young people foster, coming out of foster care, they have no place to go, they don't know how to, you know, boil an egg, to tell you the truth, I mean, they've never had that kind of, a lot of them, that kind of experience. So, anyway, I just, I mentioned that, and I think Commissioner Borges, he made some very good remarks about this, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
So, you got Brad, Greg's next.
Yeah, Greg's going to come up, but just real quick.
I'll get you after, I'll get you after Greg.
We've tied him to the, brought him in, as we mentioned, at the MDT meetings, and so you get a bunch of different people from different professions and all in a room together talking about young people, and so we're, we're breaking that up a little bit, I mean, that group's going to continue to go, but Greg's going to actually chair a group of people that I think, and not I, but honestly, they think that might have a, more of an opportunity to impact the expediting. He has had some success with getting kids into court for evaluations quicker, and we've seen some of that, so we're starting to see some of the fruits of our labor, but hopefully there's, there's more to be done. I'll turn it over to Greg.
Hold up, Brad, you got a question?
All right.
Just one last follow-up on what Commissioner Boyle was asking you about, the proposals in front of us for this youth center, detention center vary from, you know, forty-eight beds in the HDR proposal for downtown with sixteen unfinished, you know, room for expansion, or eighty currently at the youth center that we have refurbished, of course. Do you know of a way, say we were to begin construction on that, what is a cell block downtown with forty-eight finished beds, and it's got an eighteen to twenty-four month construction cycle, do you know a way, following up on Commissioner Boyle's question, of how we get from our population of eighty to the forty-eight beds proposed in the HDR proposal in that period of time? How, how would we get from eighty to forty-eight in two years' time? Do you know? If, if you don't, say you don't, but I'm, I'm interested because it would have to be done.
And I've, I've been upfront and honest, and I felt like I've kind of gotten put in the middle of, of a lot of this, and all I've tried to do is, was just present information and be honest, that's, that's all I've tried to do, and so hopefully, I've come across that way. And I said all along that, that that does concern me, and there's work that we could do, and I've said this all along too, with the kids that are in probation, I, I mean, hell, we went to, I'm sorry, excuse, we went to Minneapolis, they hardly had any kids in, on probation, you know? Ronnie and I were out in King County, they don't have any probation violators. There's, there's a second side to that story, though, when you go talk to the people that are working probation, they will flat out tell you that that's not a good idea. The kids walk all over them, and the kids end up, we talk about not pushing the kids deeper into the system. They end up pushing the kids deeper into the system because they don't hold them accountable until it's too late and now all of a sudden they're faced with an adult charge. So, I do believe that the probation needs to play a role, are they playing too large of a role right now? You know, those are the kind of things, and then to the legislation this coming July of 2019, you know, what kind of an impact will that have? But, yeah.
Very good, well, thank you.
Well, let me answer that question because this is, and I respect your, your, your point, we've had that point, the, the people controlling it feel they can hit it, and personally, this argument has happened when we were at a hundred and forty-four beds and it went down to twenty-four staff detention. People were saying, well, you know, what if we need the new beds? Then quietly, you know, with the Prison Rape Elimination Act, it's total capacity now is ninety-six, you know, and this is just my feeling, and everybody says, well, what if there's a big hall of kids to some degree? If there's a big hall of kids because of Priya, we could do it and be in overtime and things of that sort. The fact is, when, when the statute change happens to, to bring us to a point, and unfortunately, if we'd listened to everybody in the past that said, oh, well, this is not enough, if this is not enough, we wouldn't be here. There was, there was squawking when the state stopped putting status offenders there, and now nobody wants to go back to that. So, you know, I understand the angst and some of the concern where everybody else, but to some degree, forty-eight to sixty beds is policy in itself, because if you stay to saying everybody's, well, I'm concerned about this and that, you don't force the system to get where it's at. It's going to be forced next year, the state is going to force, and the state is probably going to continue to do those things because there's talk about the state making changes that status offenders cannot be on probation. You know, we are number two in the country with status offenders on probation, and those status offenders take up time from the probation officers, the judges, the county attorneys, where they can't deal with the kids that they really need to deal with. So, and I mean in respect to all the opinions, but, you know, if we took that approach, we wouldn't be here where we are now. So, I, I don't, I don't have any fear of going there and doing, and I think it forces everybody in the system to step up with the services, and no matter what happens, we won't have a building up next year, we're going to be forced to deal with it next year in the current status. So, I just say that, that, you know, the, the future is not having them there to get services, and we need to embrace that and be ready to roll. Brad, you want to bring Greg up? Okay, Greg.
Good afternoon.
So, with, I mean, okay, I'm going to need to manage this a little bit because of time on the clock and us getting pushed out of here, but also, I'm going to just actually be tight, and so we can get through.
I'll be very concise. Greg Hepburn, Douglas County Youth Center. The report in its structure has not changed. As I've gone through this now for a few months, I've started to identify certain things, started to be able to really pinpoint a direction in which I think would glean
Should we put this on the screen maybe?
It's not showing.
Oh, will it fit?
No.
We need to modernize this. Okay, sorry.
It's okay.
It's not your fault.
It's, it's enlarging though, month by month it's getting bigger. I'll come in with a poster board next time. So, just a few things, in the process of looking at what are some of the obstructions to release, a few things stand out. One in particular is obviously the psyche valves and the different types of evaluations that are being ordered. They're causing law, the, the court date to be put out because the availability for clinicians to be able to conduct those evaluations isn't as readily available. So, that's one. Another that you'll notice is motions to either revoke, to transfer, or to commit to a particular treatment. Those are also pushing court dates back because it's a matter of obtaining information, you know, to be able to figure out what they want to do with each particular detainee. Another thing that you'll see on here is juveniles who are in adult court, they're here, they're there on bond and they're not able to post bond, I believe there's maybe anywhere from five to six of juveniles who are on the report that are there for that. With that being in mind, when you look at the, the release orders or applications that are being made by probation to send youth to particular places, started breaking them down into either thirty-day segments, sixty-day segments, ninety, or a hundred and twenty. And from the youth after, well, between the admit date of two-twenty-seven to eight-three, August third, that, that's the hundred and twenty day and beyond mark. So, there's only one youth within that section who even has some type of placement readily available, and it's at OHB and there's a bed waiting for them. Between that, the numbers, you know, tend to increase, of course, after the ninety-day mark because particularly it's the severity of the crime that's being committed, you know, that's keeping them there that long. So, those are just a few of the things. I believe that we have, and I don't have it on this report, but I believe that we have nine youth that are waiting for evaluations, or as of eleven-twenty-nine, were waiting for evaluation. So, those are just some of the things that are kind of driving the numbers up from this standpoint, and again, as I continue to dissect and get into these numbers a little bit more, different things are popping up, and I'm able to really kind of, you know, assess those things.
Okay. What, tell me, what's this committee you're chairing again?
It's the case processing.
Oh.
Our co-chair.
I know that, so I thought it was something new.
No, so it's, but what we're looking at doing is doing a true MDT
Okay.
For the case processing and bringing that meeting
Into the center?
On a weekly basis.
Okay, okay, that's, okay, I got it. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thanks for this, you get better every time.
Thank you.
There's just a few on here that I, I, I guess I have just, if you know, questions on. On, on the back page, top individual, looks like to be a twelve-year-old boy who's been there since October thirty-first, and it says, "Lost placement at Boystown Shelter Psychological." Could you expand on that a little bit, what does that mean?
He's thirteen now, but the
Had his birthday in the youth center, did he?
He did, yes, that's correct. What's that? And, and we had cake for him, we celebrated his birthday, so, so. But the placement in particular for this young man that he lost, I don't, I'm not sure of the specifics of it because I'm not on the units as much talking with the youth since I'm in this capacity. I hope to be able to get myself back into that because it really tells, it paints a better picture of each of the youth on here, but there's a variety of things, it could be attack on a peer, it could be attack on a staff member, it could be just not amenable to the treatment that's being provided at the time, I mean, there's just a, a broad range, and again, I'm not, I'm not certain about that particular situation.
Okay. There are some here that are being held just kind of on, on motion status, it looks like, a couple down from the one we just talked about
Mm-hmm.
Is a motion to transfer to county court, and this is a seventeen-year-old kid since November seventh. So, I, I don't know if you're aware of the, you know, what motion we're talking about or why, why a kid would be held on a, on a motion hold, do you, do you know anything about that?
So, the, I've, I've sat and I've testified for several kids that are in there who are, who are seeking a motion to transfer from adult to juvenile court, and the biggest hindrance in that is just scheduling the timeframe to be able to get everything together from what I've found.
But this looks like a motion to transfer to county court.
Right.
So, that would be from juvenile court to county court.
And, and, and there's been some of those as well too, but the main thing, I think with this particular situation is because came in on a new charge and birth date may be coming up soon, and so they probably feel like they've exhausted all the resources for this young man, he's probably going to turn eighteen, and they're looking to charge as an adult.
I see. Well, thanks, this is very helpful.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Craft.
I'm going to ask a big favor, and that's next time you define some of these terms for us. Such as, because this is a public document, anybody who wants to access it might want to know what terminated means, absconded, juv even, J U V for juvenile, things like that, the public may not know what they mean. We've had time to study it. So, please, at the bottom here, make some notes as to what the terms mean.
Absolutely, that's an excellent point, thank you.
Commissioner Borges.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I have held off saying anything publicly about this in hopes that I was going to get a little bit more general information about our youth that are being sent to an adult Lincoln Regional Center for Services. To me, that's unacceptable, and it goes back to the issues of what we need to do and what services we need to have here to address our youth and make sure that we have some mental medical services for them. I did reach out to try to find out not specifics, I didn't want names, I didn't want birth dates, I didn't want any of that, I asked two questions, I believe it was, and that was, why were they in there and what other placements failed? Or didn't accept them, just so that we would know what we needed to look at. So, as we move through discussions about programs and services, players within the system need to be a little bit more, let's play nice in the sandbox together because, again, it's, in the end, it's for the kids, and a kid, in my opinion, does not belong in an adult Lincoln Regional Center for Services. And so, again, I'm, I'm not trying to find out or provide any, you know, secret information that can't be shared with anybody, I'm just looking to see what we need to look at in terms of programs and services that we need to either build capacity on, speak with those providers to find out what's wrong, or start a new program, that's it. So, I appreciate the information that you give us on this report because it does shed some light on those discussions that we're having on programs and services, and this is helpful, and I appreciate the work that you do trying to move our youth through that system, and so keep up the good work.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I think that's all, Greg.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Thanks, Greg.
Okay.
Again, Brian Smith, six-five-one-six, my first two questions are actually for Superintendent Alexander.
Yeah, Brad, you got a, Brad? Brad, you got a couple?
So, in regards to what we've seen today, everything's been historical information, so my, my first question is, what sort of a strategic plan do you have going forward? Is it a three-year, a five-year, a ten-year plan for the, for managing the DCYC?
In ten minutes. In what regard? Are you talking specifically about the population?
No, just specifically, what, how long do you plan out for?
We have a five-year plan.
Okay. So, so the follow-up question to that, the answer is, DCYC has a five-year plan, so my question here is, we have all this historical data, but my, I'm curious about how, where you get information for forecasting projections, for the number of kids in detention, for staffing, for things of that nature, where, what sort of forecast data do you, do you receive from, from the county or any other sources?
Now, we do a staffing analysis, that's a part of it, and we know how many living units we have, we know how many people are required to work on those living units. units we have, we know how many people are required to work on those living units. PRIA came into play, obviously that increased our, our staffing as we had to be at a-
Just pointing PRIA.
I'm sorry, I'm terrible about that. Prison Rape Elimination Act, it requires that there's a one-to-eight staffing ratio for the kids, so, the board stepped up and supported me in terms of the additional staff that was going to be required, so we, we met that criteria.
Okay. So, I guess for the next, if we're looking at 2019, 2020, 2021, and you look at your staffing needs, how do you, where do you get the information as far as the number of juveniles that you expect to have in detention?
I mean, what we've done historically is looked at the historical information in terms of predicting what's, we can expect going forward.
So, my next question actually goes to Commissioner Rogers. This is in regards to the comprehensive plan, the Juvenile Justice, Douglas County Juvenile Justice Comprehensive Plan, 135 pages, I've looked over it, I've read a good chunk of it, and there's historical data in there, and there's some intentional programming data, information, but I'm curious, how does the county then, or OYS, or whoever's been involved in putting that together, how do you model out the data forecasting for, you know, for the, for the next few years' needs?
The plan is done every three years. As of about six years ago, that plan, they meet with community groups, and they get feedback from the plan, and they do a survey on them with that plan to see what their needs are. Those needs are taken into account, they use a combination of our data and state data. So, the plan isn't about detention, because the plan, you need the plan to get money to fund programs to keep kids out. So, the data that's used to some degree is from community input, and I'm assuming program, data that they get from programs. I'm not exactly sure on the source, but there's meetings that happen every year, and then on the third year, there's an extensive survey done with members to get feedback on that plan, and then it's gone about and approved, it's final.
So, specific with, in regards to data forecasting and modeling, I didn't see anything in that plan that models out what to, what to expect from changes in programs, new programs, increased funding for programs, whatever, whatever actions are recommended in that plan, I didn't see any forecasting. Is there any forecasting that exists?
I don't know specifically because the forecasting is not required by the law. I mean, nobody, there's few, we have data, and I've stated before that we need a system that allows us to get all of, we have data in places, but we can't grab it all in one pot. So, the forecasting piece is not a requirement by the state because no, only about three counties would be able to fill it out in 90, so, that process, I'll have to ask them to talk a little bit about in detail, but I don't know of any forecasting that's done in that. The only thing I know, like I said, is the community input on the ground, and they compare numbers from the programs that they had over the years, and then they try to anticipate based on the feedback what they think that would be.
So-
But the data, but the need here is not, a lot of the emphasis here is not data forecasting, it is based on results that the input gives them.
So, to extrapolate this for just a second, is in the Chin Report, there was data forecasting. It said to expect between 133 kids in detention in the next 15, by 2035, or negative 102. Those were, those were two of the forecast options, which is statistically ridiculous, and the, the approach that was taken in that is not statistically sound. The question, and then also the Chin Report throws into the middle of this, a number of 48, which is what we've latched on to. The, from what I've seen right now, the county has not provided any sort of statistical modeling that allows us to get to that point. They don't have any statistical forecasting, any predictive analytics, anything that would lead us to believe that whatever programs we're putting in place now are going to make a significant enough difference that will overcome the inertia of the last five years with a steady population. So, here's, here's the core of what we've been asking for from the public, and I think maybe this is the way that I'm going to articulate it at this moment, that brings us all together, is that what you're proposing is a monumental shift in dollars spent in housing and, and in programs, I'm, that I've seen in that 135-page report, but nowhere along the line do we have any sort of an idea that this, these actions, we expect them to produce these results. We don't have anything that says specifically, the LB 1112, we expect that to reduce the number of kids in detention by X number, by a certain percent, by whatever it is, and we also don't have any sort of predictive analytics that show us that any of the, any of the activities take, undertaken by the county or its partners as part of that comprehensive plan will yield any sort of expected results.
That's a, that's a fair question, but I don't know of any county, I don't know of any government in the country that has predictive analytics. A lot of that is ideal, and if you got that and you want to give it to me, I'll drive that hard to make it happen. The fact is, is that the closest that you have to that is CompStat, that OPD does to do some things in regards to crime, and they take the crime there to predict the future, and we do that to the best we can with the QRS and the probation data and other stuff there. So, I think your point is fair, and I'll gladly look into it, but there's no, there's no government entity, the state doesn't even have that, so.
Well, that's, that is untrue, there are government agencies that do that. Well, I will also, I can get you those, I can get you names and numbers. The other thing is, is that Metropolitan Community College 10 years ago ran a predictive analytics program with a company here in Omaha called CA, which does, which does predictive analytics, and they did a program on the longevity of the roofs of their particular buildings. So, I will, I will send this information to the clerk for distribution to the board-
Well, please, and you can, you can hand it to me, but-
Because we, we need this.
But note that you're taking an educational model and trying to apply it here. Now, I was just in a, well, it's been known and it's been reiterated, you're asking us to do stuff that I don't know that a government does, because even the prediction on the size of what jails are in the future are based on third-grade reading scores. So, we, that's nothing we're in regards to. I think it's a great deal, and when they get the model and you give me that information, I'll definitely look into it.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, Larry?
I know you're all tired, I'm going to keep you long, Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette, I'm sorry?
No, you're all right, go, please.
Mission statements. Every one of the philanthropics around Omaha have mission statements. Every youth-serving agency has mission statements, and they have had for I don't know how many years. Mark, you're, you're acquainted with autism. I also am acquainted with autism, and not specifically diagnosed that way, but it's a form of brain injury, a form of brain malfunction, deformity, processing problems, but I have a grandson that had similar things, but he was missing the corpus callosum. Now, what's common in all of this, we have youths that are being detained. In some cases, our documents say they're not being detained for the offense they're charged with, and that's confusing. If they're charged with something, why aren't they detained for that? Now, when you take these kids in to assess them, there's long practice in Omaha, and I'm going back to third grade, when problems started coming up in school and we have special education. Well, there's this overall thing, it's just behavior, it's behavior, it's behavior, it's behavior. Detain that kid, let's take him in for assessment, but maybe you don't do a brain MRI to find out, does he have autism? Does he have mental illness? It comes under big umbrellas, of course, but you have that checklist that says, oh yeah, he's got a behavior problem, sir, we're going to treat him for behavior. We had a candidate running for sheriff's office that said, "I'd like to maybe do a militaristic-type program to teach them discipline." Tough love, I don't know, tough love doesn't work with kids that have autism, they need something a little bit different, don't they, Mark? People that don't process this as fast, brain injuries, they need a little bit different treatment programs. So, when we're talking about the treatment programs, you know, you have to have an openness with those professionals. But I went to a number of conferences with families and professionals studying the field of brain deformities and brain problems, including autism. I met people, it's parents, and I met the kids. They had a lot of best practices, too, and this goes back to 2007, 2008, and you want to know what? Not one of the professionals in Omaha, in the school system, or at the State House, wanted to talk about their best practices, not interested because privacy laws. And we know better. We don't have to consult with the guy out at University of California, Los Angeles, that is an expert pediatric neurologist that started that organization. So, please ask your professionals that are giving you the input to stop being so expert about everything and get the input from the families and from the kids. I see no kids, I don't see any families, and most of those other situations, I didn't. I've sat in on IEPs, and they really didn't want any input from me, but I've taken my grandson hunting and lots of other things, and I know there are things he can do, but everybody else thinks, no, they probably can't. So, they've got locked minds, so be careful what you put them in and who assesses them for what. There's professionals outside of the system that should have been doing that in the school system. That's what the edu, the special education program was started. Why aren't we using it there? Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to item D, Community Services, and item one is Resolution opposed, any proposed constructions of dams by the Papio Missouri MRD, and the state encourage alternatives to low-impact flood methods. Commissioner Boer.
I'd like to postpone that, no, I'm just kidding.
Yeah, I'll second that.
I already owe, I didn't know it, I already owe these two lunch for starters, plus, let's just get right to it. This, I'll just, I am going to cut to the chase. I hand it out to everybody here who's going to be testifying, as well as the commissioners are getting the information. I numbered the pages, and if, I guess I'd focus on primarily the Nebraska cases, which are on, let's see, I think it's page two, and maybe on one to some extent, too, but if you look at page two over at the left, it's got Gage County, and Holt, and Garfield, and Loop County, and the bottom line on this is that if you switch over to the, to page one, it kind of really summarizes it pretty well. Loop Valley, Wheeler Counties, in 2010, in the summer of 2010, they had 10 failures, including, and they list the names over there in pretty small type, Grade Creek, Erickson, and so forth, and Brethauer. It says, "The village of North Loop was evacuated due to this failure of this dam, the Brethauer," and the next line says, "Heavy rains led to dam failures in Atkinson, Burwell, North Loop, Sargent, Scola, Spalding, and Taylor." And then at the far right, there's some summary of news accounts, but the bottom one says, NEMA says 10 Nebraska dams failed during heavy rains. That really sums it all up, there's Texas on here, of course, the classic case of a dam failing at Rapid City, at Canyon Lake, that sent water rushing into Rapid City, South Dakota. It killed 238 people, and 3,000 people were injured. Dams are really nice things, I mean, and even the world, the world had a right, it said these dams are built and talked about for development, that's what it's all about. And I don't care if that's done, but I, I don't want this presented or used as flood control because it's not, it's really obvious it's not. We have an alternative that we need to talk to the Resource District about, they're in charge of this function, but I hope they will come around and think about another process called low-impact development, because what that does, it's really, I think, an interesting concept, it really shifts the burden to the property owner to control the water. So, for example, at the West Road Shopping Center, under federal law, unless that's been suspended, who knows, they are supposed to be controlling the water that comes off of their property. And one of the reasons is that they, the, all this water that comes off now goes into the system, and it's oil from cars and all these other drippings that take place, it all goes right back into the streams, which they've been trying to stop. If you have a, and Kent Holm is here, and he can speak to this eloquently, if there are some low-impact development, and it's put in place, if you look at the University of Nebraska Medical Center, as you pass 42nd Street, there's a very, a very nice-looking kind of a pond thing with rocks and so forth, and there's greenery and so forth, that's low-impact development, the water comes off those lots, goes into there, goes, and percolates down into the ground, and it doesn't cause all this contamination. That is what I'm concerned about, and I'm not going to talk anymore. Kent, would you please come down for a moment? And I, I think you may have some materials, and then I want to hear from, and I apologize deeply for having the two of you here that long particularly. Kent, would you make some, you're prepared, I think, to make some comments perhaps about low-impact development and what it, what it means, and also dams, if you would?
Sure. Kent Holm, Barnum Services Director. I guess just a couple of things, I have some, some photos and some other things, if you'd like to see them, but-
Right.
You know, one of the things that the, that the county has done from a comprehensive plan standpoint is to use conservation design and, and designating open space to, to try to keep development away from creeks, other water bodies. And, and there's really kind of two, two different things that are going on here. One, there's, there's a lot of development that goes on that encroaches on, on the historic flood plains, and the areas where rivers, creeks have traditionally been allowed to, to just kind of overflow and not impact structures. From a development community standpoint, we've, we've really encroached on those and really kind of cut off the function of those flood plains, which is, which is significant. The other piece is that, going back to the second grade, we all learned about the, the water cycle, and rainfall, other precipitation, used to soak into the ground, and we substantially changed that. And by changing that in, in combination with encroaching on the flood plain, we've, we've created and exacerbated flooding situations. So, both of those things have to, have to be addressed in some way. Low-impact development can help reduce the amount of water that's flowing overland and help to get some of that water, mimicking natural systems and getting it to infiltrate. That, that's really the, the whole crux of, of low-impact development. And green infrastructure, you'll hear that term kind of synonymous in some cases. There are a number of examples, I think we've got some great examples at the Health Center that we've, we've done at County Extension, that we're taking water out of, and keeping it out of the system. And there, it serves another benefit in that it's in a combined sewer area, so we're also helping the city of Omaha meet that federal mandate to not have combined sewer overflows. So, it can be, LAD is not the solution for everything-
Right.
-but it, but it can substantially help, particularly at the, at the, the point where the rain falls. It's, it's, there are small elements that can be put in place that definitely help.
Well, I really appreciate it, and I apologize again for having this so late because it's a very important issue, and it's all, you know, if anybody has any questions, I certainly can ask, Kent. Excuse me. I leave that to the chair. Okay.
Comment, I'll do.
All right. Is he limited to two minutes, is that the deal? Jim, I apologize, you've been very patient, you're a good sport.
Let me say, we're limited to 20 minutes of this poll, and if we continue, we're going to have to go to 9:03.
Jim Thompson, 1001 South 35th Avenue, I'm here in behalf of the Papio Missouri Natural Resources District. I precipitated this resolution in front of you, was a series of meetings, and I was going to go through the meetings and all that, but I'll just cut to the chase. Resolution you have in front of you is flawed, let's get to talk about what the resolution says. It's puzzling that Douglas County, and I get this from constituents and some other board members, why you would adopt a resolution not even in Washington County, or in Douglas County, but Washington County. As far as I know, they've not adopted, for fear that this structure that you reference is going to be built. They know it won't be built, we, the Papio, know that this big structure won't be built. Why would you even consider it as a Douglas County Board? No order to say that it'll be built in Washington County, except in 2004, when it was first discussed, and it went away. Matter of fact, preparing for this, I was going, whoa, where's that map again? I've got file folders, as you folks probably do at home, I couldn't find it, it went away. It went away. So I can find it, but it's not necessary. Furthermore, your resolution on strong opposition of dams elsewhere, which is hidden there in the language, has it never been, nor does it now, including with Kent's discussion, does include any scientific or engineering basis for that position. That's what bothers me. It bothers our board. I think it's time you recognize that building flood control structures are essential to protecting lives and property. When dams are built, we reduce flooding and enhance water quality in the most economical way. You have any idea how many thousands of rain gardens and thousands of undesirable rain barrels the county would need to establish to hold back a fraction of the water a dam could hold back? When dams are built, the floodplain shrinks. When the new maps that were recently created finally get approved by FEMA, millions of dollars, millions, will be saved by those property owners that no longer reside in the floodplain. It shrinks. It goes away. You're on this side of the map now. You don't have to pay flood insurance. Folks in the business know what that means and maybe some of you already pay it. I know probably Clarida does.
I wish I had flood insurance.
But, you know, when dams are built, we create recreational activities as a side benefit. Simply look at the popularity of Flanagan Lake since it opened, and Commissioner Morgan was on hand for the groundbreaking. Thank you very much for that participation, and I think your positive comments back then were very welcome. But why would you take that position denying the population the opportunity to experience needed recreation such as fishing, trail use, camping, picnicking, et cetera? When dams are built, developers build things on the property outside the floodplain. Special note, we are not in bed with developers, nor do we build these structures for their benefit as others has accused us of doing. What happens on private land outside the structure itself, we have no control over that. The city or county has jurisdiction over zoning and all that. We don't zone that. By the way, our practices and policy include low-impact methods as a tool to minimize flooding, as Kent indicated. Our relationship with NRCS is strong, where we assist farmers for terracing, drainage, ditch improvements, et cetera. We also have a program to help fund rain gardens. The county has gotten a couple of grants from us, one on 42nd Center, which now that building is sold and the rain guard has gone to weeds. By the way, when you create a rain garden, like they see at the Med Center and Love More Than 42nd, you have to maintain them to be functional. When you just put them in there and ignore them, they become dysfunctional and doesn't hold the water like it should. I realize that this resolution is only a statement on paper, but certainly misleads the direction of where your governing bodies should place energy. As we tried in the past getting Douglas County to join the Papio Watership Partnership where the engineering work, scientific discussions, and recommendations prevail over us politicians ranting over things we know little about. Your joining that would benefit all those jurisdictional lines that are ignored by nature. I wanna thank Mr. Boyle for bringing the information on the dams. There's a distinct difference between a high-hazard dam and low-hazard dam. Those that failed were low-hazard, and I haven't examined each one of those. But what you've shown us is that if the dam weren't there, how much more damage would there have been for those heavy rain events? And that's part of the analysis, that little handout you got. Can you imagine? Yeah, the water spreads, dams hold back the water, and that's a good thing. We cannot stop urban sprawl. If any of us could do that, the need to control floods would be less. Our actions, the actions our board has taken to build what we can and to plan for more flood control are done to protect not only us, but our children's, children's, children. And that benefit is worth it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. I appreciate that, Jim, and we'll, we'll talk further when, now, I'll buy you lunch after what you sat through. I appreciate it. Same for you, Ms. Shaw, I appreciate your being here. Give us your name and address and give us hell.
Shawn Mlotz, 10404 North 132nd Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm back.
Yes, great. Good to see you.
I am praising you, the Douglas County Commissioners, for considering this resolution opposing the Papio Missouri River NRD's dam-building plan. I believe this county board has been a leader in providing innovative solutions to stormwater management and controlling flood risks throughout Douglas County and Washington County through your joint stormwater policies. I was privileged to serve as one of the original members of the committee that helped develop these policies. We worked hard to present policies that offered less intrusive, less taxpayer-funded methods of improving water quality and controlling water quantity runoff, such as low-impact development that was mentioned earlier, and enhancing regulations, which the county did to minimize runoff. The final version was approved in November of 2007. Your policies are a cornerstone of protecting the watershed. If our government entities followed your lead, the implied need for flood control risk could easily be accomplished by a stroke of the pen rather than using public money to spend on enhancing and growing property taxes that's already out of control in our state. Simple example of what this board has adopted is stop filling in and building up the floodplain, stop floodplain infringement, require conservation design and low-impact development. And where we are today is that last week, we learned through a couple of joint meetings with the Papio NRD and the Corps, there were forums that the Corps of Engineers is now doing a $3 million study on flood risk. During this event, we asked the Corps to study less costly and less intrusive measures for controlling this threat and not allow a path of fear where dams are the only solution. Further, we pointed out that property taxes, coupled with eminent domain and condemnation powers, should never be used for economic development or recreational purposes, especially under the guise of flood control. In addition, we strongly suggested that the Corps' study includes uses of LIDs and a comprehensive review of existing regulations by the city of Omaha and Sarpy County and the other organizations that aren't following our lead through the stormwater policies. If we don't, logically, every dam built will have additional development occur, which causes additional runoff. The cycle will not change without a change in regulations and philosophies. The current system perpetuates itself, passing the burden to future generations to solve and pay for a never-ending problem, which brings us back to the resolution before this board. I respectfully request that this board continue on its path of being proactive and request that you adopt this resolution. By doing so, perhaps it would help guide the joint Papio NRD-Corps of Engineers study to actively consider logical alternatives to building dams. And with that, I would ask for a revision to include the Douglas County dams that are within your jurisdictions in that resolution. I agree to some extent with what Director Thompson said, where you mentioned just Washington County dams. As a person who is affected by two of the dams within the county, I would greatly appreciate an amendment, a friendly amendment to the resolution.
Where would you place that?
Comma, Washington, Douglas County?
Okay. I'll make that motion.
Or in Douglas County?
Yeah.
If anybody has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Shaw. Appreciate it.
I don't see any questions. Okay.
Are we looking at action today?
We can, or you wanna do it next week? Well, why don't we add Douglas County in there, if you don't mind? I'm making a friendly motion.
Maybe we should do it only because they're here.
Next week? For now, now?
Oh, I think now.
Okay, let's do it now, then.
I mean, because they've said...
Well, I know that.
Eight hours.
I just, I agree. I was responding to Claire. I would like, okay, go ahead.
Commissioner Borg.
Well, I just wanna, Borgerson or Boyle?
Borgerson.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I guess, I don't wanna take action today because if Director Thompson just came up and said the resolution has inaccuracies in it, then we need to fix that.
Yeah.
So, you know, and again, I guess, you know, it is our issue, but it's not our issue, so I agree with you. So we, I think we need to have a little bit more information on what exactly we're voting against or voting for.
Okay, I would agree to that. I don't have a problem with that at all. It was pretty rushed because this meeting was like Wednesday that they had, and I didn't know about it till Tuesday afternoon. So I don't have a problem with finessing and correcting. I rely on you to help as well. But let me just say, the reason that this was focused on Washington County is, you know, this all started when we had that group together, and I turned to Claire and I said, how come Washington County's out of here? You know, why'd they get out? We went up there and listened to it, and there's this plan, plan to take all this farmland, valuable farmland, and turn it into lakes and so forth. And it is related to developers. I'm not saying it's not a conspiracy, but it is. So I had, I had a developer call me and tell me, he said, probably a guy who gave money to me, and I underlined the word "gave" in the past. Anyway, he said, Mike, what the hell are you doing? And I said, we're opposing LB-160. Does that ring a bell? And he said, I said, well, we were trying to do this and that. He said, well, you're destroying development in Douglas County. And he slammed the phone down. And so, I mean, you know, I mean, what everyone wants to say, there are people living around these lakes that were developed at public funds. And I told him during that conversation, you know, I live in the old market. If you wanna build lakes, you pay for it. That's what I said. Well, anyway, why don't we, Larry, I'm sorry, I think what we need to do is get to, get to this next week and we'll sharpen the language and I'll, frankly, Jim, I'll talk to you and you'll see what you think about it, and Sean as well. And we'll kinda get something that we can agree on a little bit, I hope. Jim?
Well, can I say, Larry, I'll let you speak. I wanna, I wanna build on Commissioner Borgerson's deal. And Sean, I have all the love for you sitting in on that conference before, but when this thing happened before, I felt it was a little bit of our ownership, and we made the tweaks to the, to the policies and continue to. But I'm gonna just tell you, I have a hard time as Douglas County's dipping into Washington County stuff. And I'm just telling you, I, I'm all for low-impact development, but I'm not a believer that all dams are bad. And this, this is the read on that. And the last thing, you know, I wanna do, I would be extremely mad if Cass County start passing resolutions that they don't agree with stuff in Douglas County. So that's where I'm at on that, you know. Larry?
Very quickly, I hope everybody's a little bit in touch with the controversies about chicken processing plants, chicken raising farms. As I understand it, there are some applications, if not already occurring, in Washington County. And of course, we know water flows down the middle, so that water would be coming this way also. These disposal ponds are a topic. I've been out to Fremont, been in on some of that stuff out there, and it's kinda scary what I've heard. The barn-raising problem is, is not quite as scary as what comes after that. The corporations wanna come in because it's economically beneficial to pick up the chickens there and process them there, and that brings a lot of trucks in and out all the time. But what do they do with the waste? That problem is not solved. So maybe you folks can bring that up in terms of Washington County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
I wanna say, you know, the reason that, you know, we were involved in this, we started out as a five-county, whatever, and we, Claire and I went up there and found out what was going on in Washington, and we felt that that was not appropriate, and we didn't approve it, so we pulled out. So that's why we have our nose in Washington County. These folks are up above us, and it's, it's a part and parcel of being opposed to eminent domain in this case. I mean, we just passed one, but I know, but this is taking valuable farmland, and I mean hundreds of acres, hundreds of acres, maybe thousands of acres, and doing this. And there's no indication that these are really solving much of anything. The other thing is, you'll remember, I went down and testified on LB-160, and so we were given by Hal Dobbs lobbyist, who said, well, we'll just, we'll give you control over any dam exclusively in your county. And of course, there was, then they didn't build any exclusively in our county, so, which we figured, we tried to get that removed, but it didn't work. So we've been around the block with these folks a few times. I'd like to have a better relationship with them. You know, Jim and I will go to lunch and I won't put my finger in their soup or anything. But I do think we need to have a better one. And so I don't mind laying this over for a week. I kinda thought we should anyway. And we'll spice up the language and we'll find out what you think it should be, but I think we rightfully have a nose in what happens in Washington County. They're neighbors of ours, and we're part of a county government, and I think it's important we support farmers when their land is being taken over by dams that, you know, I don't know, it seems like all we have is houses, and it leads to more urban sprawl. So anyway, I move, we, I don't think we have to do anything to lay this over. We're just bringing it up for next week, and I would like Mr. Holm to make a, even a bigger presentation next time we have time.
Let's make it for early on the agenda.
That's fine. Just let me, let me say that. Last time, the Washington County's board not even got the same makeup. They came to us, we sat in the room. I remember going up there in their room, sitting down. And unless Washington County comes in here and says they want us to be a part, I'm not gonna get in Washington County's business.
Well, that's kinda disappointing. I think that's probably retaliation.
Commissioner Borg. No.
I'm not changing my position on the Juvenile Dental Center. I have a meeting at 1:30.
Mike, it's got, okay, I was just leaving, it's got nothing to do with that.
Okay, never mind.
All right. With that, we'll go to G, Human Resources. Item one is, as presented, the weekly personnel report, there are no legislative items, and we do have a need for executive session for the purpose of labor negotiations, litigation, and real estate. With that, is there a motion to go into second session? Is there a second? Motion by Commissioner Duda, second by Commissioner Morgan.
Motion passes. Commissioners Boyle and Kavanaugh are absent. All our commissioners voting yes.
And we're going in again for labor negotiations, litigation, and real estate.